Seven o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order if you could please stay off the fledge.
........................................................................ All right, this is the April seventeenth business meeting of the Milford Board of Education. Can we have a little call, Mr. Griffin, please?
Yes.
Kathryn Ailing.
Here.
Adam DeYoung.
Here.
Megan Doyle.
Here.
Andrew Fowler.
Here.
Tracy Erbe.
Here.
Emily McDenousa.
Here.
Gary Pellicetti. Uh, Mr. Pellicetti's excuse, he's out of the country. Una Patrowski.
Here.
Cindy Wolf Boynton.
Here.
And Susan Glennon.
Here.
Nine members present. Thank you. You want to do reports? I have the Foreign goes first.
All right. Thank you for being here.
No problem. All right. So, good evening, everyone. Venice and I are glad to be speaking with you once again to let you in on the recent events happening at Foreign. Uh, to start, on March eighth, um, eighth grade, uh, yeah, March eighth, eighth grade students from Harperside East Shore visited Foreign to get a field of classes they'll be taking in high school. The ministry has welcomed the students when they came to the school and after helpers gave me force. We thank everyone for making this event possible. The Foreign's Best Talent Show was also a major hit. The student council is responsible for organizing the event and everyone had a great time with dancing and singing. Congratulations to Junior Kelly Asperus for winning and going home with the $100 gift card. May nineteenth is the senior prom and the post-prom will be held at In-Sports in Trumbull. Because post-prom is completely, uh, completely separate event and is family run, if anyone is interested in volunteering, they can contact Lauren Janik at 203-996-4003. Volunteers are needed for areas such as chaperoning, picking up food and delivering to post-prom, selling tickets, and raffle coordination. Recently, the fifth period and seventh period advanced culinary classes competed in the Chop Cooking Challenge this week. Students were required to use all the surprise basket ingredients to create an appetizer in twenty minutes and an entree in thirty minutes. The students displayed great teamwork, communication, and hard work throughout the experience. Students in Mr. Kane and Mr. Harris' health classes also explored the topic of daylight savings time and analyzed how it impacts their health. Students researched the historical significance of the event and also analyzed reports, um, reported claims that heart attacks, workplace injuries, and motor vehicle accidents are more severe on the Monday following daylight savings. Students then engage in an insightful debate on whether or not they believe the practice should continue. Lastly, a big congratulations goes out to Senior John Lord, who won the Cheerleading Merit Award as part of the 2022-23 SCC Cheerleading Awards presented by Connecticut Orthopedic and Urgent Care. John has been cheering for four years at Foreign and it's great to see your hard work pay off.
As many of you know, we suffered a loss in our Foreign community. Ms. Davis was a member of the Foreign High School family since 1995 and brutally served thousands of students in the study of science for nearly thirty years. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Davis family at this time. We also give a congratulations to Mallory Janik and Liam Young for being awarded the 2023 Southern Connecticut Conference Scholar Leaders Award. Each year, two students from each SCC member school are selected by their principal and they are recognized for their outstanding scholarship and leadership in their respective school and community. Great job, Mallory and Liam. Another outstanding event for one of our students, Foreign Wrestling Captain Kelly Asperus, takes sixth place at the NHSCA National Championships. Foreign Journalism visited Central Connecticut State University for High School Journalism Day. They participated in workshops and met Darren Sumney from NBCCT. They also had another trip to UNH where Journalism ran the segment and learned from their Journalism Department. Congratulations to Assistance Boys Basketball Coach Kenny Patrick for receiving the International Association of Approved Basketball Officials Board Ten Barbero Award for sportsmanship. This past week, the Foreign Key Club created Cards of Kindness for patients at the Milford Pre-Hub Center. It was a simple yet moving after-school service project that we're hoping will put smiles on all the patients' faces, especially as lots of patients in these areas can get lonely at times and sad, so making these positive cards will hopefully brighten their day. A congratulations again to Foreign 2023 SCC Artists. James Allen, Agatha Dalton, and Shyla Torres will represent Foreign High School in 2023 Southern Connecticut Conference Annual Art Show. This jury show features artists from the 23 SCC districts and includes art created in all genres. James, Aggie, and Shyla will have their work on display in the gallery at the Creative Arts Workshop at eighty Audubon Street in New Haven from March twenty-fifth to April fifth to April eighth, 2023. Lastly, we are happy to have our junior semi-formal dance on April twenty-eighth, 2023. The dance starts at six PM and ends at ten. Ticket sales will be online and parents and guardians will email the link to purchase tickets. This will be such an incredible event. Thank you all and we hope to speak with you again next month.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jonathan Law, Golden Sky Lord.
Thank you and good evening, Board members. It is a pleasure to be with you once again. I'll start tonight by discussing the Molly U.N. Club and their annual trip to the Nissman Conference in New York City, which is the largest Molly U.N. conference with over four thousand attendees from around the world. Students engage in caucus sessions, debating foreign policy, and forging connections with fellow delegates, but also got to have some fun. Students were accompanied to date investors for games and food and also had the chance to attend the delegate dance. The Law Ring Wakeover took place on Friday, March twenty-fourth, at the Raceway Country Club with one hundred and twenty attendees. The food was great and they danced the night away. The Key Club traveled to Springfield, Massachusetts for the annual New England District Conference. The event was very personal to our club as we have two Law Key Clubbers sitting on the district board for the 2022 to the 2023 year. Students attended workshops to prepare themselves for their roles in Key Club and attended a for- and enjoyed a formative experience filled with volunteerism and fundraising efforts. Our club came home with several awards, including third place in the Oratory Contest, first place in the non-digital poster contest, third place in the non-digital scrapbook contest, first in monthly reports, the Early Board Dudes Award, and the first first- first place in the annual achievement board. The Natural Health Risk Club held a Spring Into Wellness Week in order to prepare students for a positive spring break. Club members went on Eagle Eye News to discuss spreading kindness, gratitude, and positive affirmations to self-care. And in terms of academics, April, with April being Mathematics and Statistics Awareness Month, our National Math Honor Society has been inviting students to solve math problems presented daily on Eagle Eye News for a chance to win prizes. Law Business students attended a marketing presentation hosted by Total Mortgage at their Swanson Arena in Bridgeport. Students then enjoyed a lively hockey game in the same building. Nine Jonathan Law Choir members were accepted into the Connecticut Music Educators Association Allstate. These students spent the weekend in rehearsals led by collegiate directors to learn more and extend their choral knowledge through three days at the Connecticut Convention Center. Jonathan Law National Art Honor Society members recently participated in the SCC Creative Arts Workshop in New Haven. Law Art Faculty sent in three pieces of student work for the banquet on April fourth. Jonathan Law students Callie Kinsman and Laura Sanson were honored at the Cast banquet for outstanding achievements in the arts, also on April fourth.
In Law Sports Action, our spring sports teams and records are as follows. Girls tennis with a win this past week are at four and two record. Our boys tennis with a new head coach, Peter Wood, had his first win this past week and the record is now one and four. Our law team is undefeated as the record is two and O. Girls lacrosse and boys lacrosse are both O and two, looking for their first win. And baseball, three and four. Softball is five and one and Madison Bold this past week was nominated for Game Time Athlete of the Week. We'll be able to vote for her tomorrow. Our boys and girls outdoor track are off to a good start this year as boys are three and one and girls are two and one. Our boys and girls have a combined of one hundred and thirty-three athletes. And our senior sports banquet is coming up this next month, May seventeenth. Our update from our school counseling and college and career. The school counseling department hosted a field trip on April fifth to Courtyard University for over twenty-five junior students. During the campus visit, students participated in admissions presentation, a walking tour of the campus, and even had a lunch in their dining facility. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you all and look forward to the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So feel free to head out if you've got things to do. We won't be offended and we'll look forward to seeing you next month or coming up on the end of your tenure.
I know. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to public comment. Do we have members of the audience who wish to make public comment this evening?
I actually do. I got a good time there.
Okay, I'll let me just read, perfect timing, I'll read the public comment statement. Speakers may offer comments about school operations and programs. The board encourages speakers not to express personal complaints or defamatory comments about the Milford Board of Education personnel or any person associated with Milford Public Schools. Security issues and matters relating to negotiations and grievances will not be permitted. Consistent with the principles of the Federal Education Right to Privacy Act, discussion of students is prohibited absent parental waiver. Public comment does not allow for two-way conversation between speakers and the board. We welcome and appreciate your comments and opinions and all will be taken into consideration. Please note our meetings are televised and livestreamed on YouTube and we ask that you state your name and address for the record and leave, uh, limit your comments to three minutes. Uh, Mr. Fowler is our timekeeper. So.
I'll do my best. So, my name is Demetrius Scudder. Um, this is my wife Sonia and my son Pierce. My son has been experiencing a lot going on. He goes to Harperside. I know. I'm kind of proud of you too and I'm not sure if all of you are. He's in eighth grade, he's been experiencing, um, a lot of racist stuff. Some bullying. I'm here because, uh, with everything that has happened, it's even hard for me to remember. There's been, I don't know, seven, eight, or even nine incidents. Ten. The latest one, um, with a kid saying, telling him, saying, not directly to him, but saying that he should go jump off a bridge in the water. Anyway, um, it's led him to not want to go to school. And as unfair as that is, it's super unfair that, I don't know what's happening to the other kids, whether it's a slap on the wrist, whatever the case may be, but it's unfair for him. And all I can do is speak for him how he feels. So, we have even gone as far as to enroll him back into homeschool, which he did because of the pandemic. And he finally said, I'll go back to school in eighth grade and has only been there for a few months and doesn't go back. Doesn't feel safe. Been bullied, um.
Because he stood up for himself?
Yes. You know, labeled as a snitch, all types of stuff because he stood up for himself. Things that maybe the other kids didn't have to go through. They don't understand, but, um.
Called a slave, cotton roller?
Yes, slave, cotton roller.
N-words said to him.
N-words many, many times, um.
Most recently was said that, um, he needs that he stops from snitching, which was a threat, and then he should go jump off a bridge with no water and kill himself.
Yes. The parent that I am, the parent that my wife is, you can only imagine how I feel. The protection that I want to give to him and our family, the things that I have already endured. I'm forty-six, so I've endured a lot. And I was hoping the world that he grew up in wasn't going to have to endure the same things. Hoping that there's some progress, some kind of progression. I'm not asking anybody individually for anything, but for me personally, I need effort. I know there's no answers. I know this, we live in a climate that's different than any other time and no one can say, let's do it like this because it's like this. It's different. Some things are the same. Some things haven't changed, but some things are different. But I just need effort because every day we are dealing with how he feels. And it's very unfortunate.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to make public comment? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jesus and I have a comment slash question about inclusivity for bilingual immigrants and initiatives on diversity for students who come from different backgrounds and speak different languages in order to, um, make them feel included and fit in society and be able to contribute because a lot of us want to contribute to society, but sometimes different things like accent or other things, um, become an impediment in order to succeed, contribute, and collaborate. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board this evening? Okay, seeing no one close, public comment, I'll move on to Chair's report. Um, I just want to take a moment to, um, remind the board that we do have a Equity and Engagement Supervisor who works on some of the things that we've heard about this evening, um, from the public. And, um, we do have, um, a plan to have a report from her in May, um, on her, you know, she's relatively new and we anticipate a report in May from her on what she has accomplished so far and what we can expect to have happen.
Um, I have to say, I'm, I'm confident, you know, in who we have worked with so far. This is not saying anything disrespectful to them. I'm just hopeful.
I understand. Thank you. We're hopeful as well. I mean, it's a, it is, um, it's work that the board is committed to. So, I think you and I, we've spoken and I've hopefully put that across that it's work the board is committed to. So, we will do better. That's all I can say.
Thank you.
We, uh, let's see. Just a reminder to the board also, if you have any further budget questions, please make sure you send them along so that we can get them answered. And with that, I will turn the meeting over to Dr. Kritaya for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon, thank you, members of the Board of Education. Tonight, we have a couple of presentations for you, um, that include some really important work. And two are annual presentations that we, uh, share with you and the public on our Accountability Report as well as Performance and Profile Report. And then next, we're doing a special presentation on Instructional Coaching. I will, um, interestingly, that the topic of public comment is about diversity and equity because I am planning to highlight a couple of those pieces all throughout these three presentations. So, um, if you could stick around through some of the hard number stuff that isn't as exciting, we'll get to some parts of the dialogue, um, where we could take a look at opportunities. So, to start with, this evening, we're going to take a look at the Next Generation Accountability Report. So, what is the Connecticut Next Generation Accountability System? It is, um, a system that reports on how our school district's doing. And it's a system that values academic growth, not just achievement. Um, for those of you who have not been on the board at a time where this report was solely about achievement, how well are you doing, period. It did not honor growth. This system honors growth. It goes beyond test scores. You'll see that reflected in the report. And it also, um, provides an opportunity for us to look at how subgroups of children are doing, particularly those that are deemed high needs, uh, according to the state's definition, economically disadvantaged, multilingual learners, and, and students with disabilities. So, as I said, it goes beyond test scores. These are the twelve indicators that the report, uh, provides information on. I'll have you read those, through those twelve indicators. They move through academic indicators to participation, to chronic absenteeism, what post-secondary opportunities look like, graduation rates, um, entrance rates of students leaving our school system, as well as including physical fitness information and arts access. So, just to hit pause for a minute and remind ourselves where we've come over the last few years, COVID has interrupted the reporting of this system. So, this year is the first real data set that, um, one could consider solid since COVID. Now, this data in front of you represents student achievement work as well as other data points in the twenty-one-twenty-two school year. So, as we closed out last year, this report demonstrates data from the last school year. I will remind you that we were socially distanced through February. Um, actually, throughout the year, we did not bring desks altogether all of a sudden. Uh, we had desks in certain learning spaces. And remember, we were still masked through February. The SBA assessments, SAT and AP are administered in March, April, and May of the school year. So, take masks off, uh, masks off in February and then let's test you. So, let me take you back. Uh, in the spring of two thousand nineteen, we reported on seventeen, eighteen data. Then, in the spring of two thousand twenty, this report was canceled because that board meeting in March was canceled. Um, and then in twenty-one of spring, the assessments were canceled altogether on accountability. We were given a waiver by the, uh, the feds. And then in two thousand twenty-one, uh, we did report on, um, data from two thousand twenty-one in the spring of twenty-two, but that was modified data. That was not complete data, okay? So, today is the first set of post-COVID data points that we'll be looking at. So, let's do a little quick, um, Next Generation Accountability one oh one. This chart that is before you is, um, the chart that outlines all twelve indicators. The, uh, columns that you'll be seeing on, on the report, on how to read it, is there's a column, uh, that is the indicator. It's the actual area of assessment. Two is the index rate, which is based on percentage of possible points and/or index scores derived from state assessment results depending on the target, uh, and the indicator. The next is a target identified by the state. The next column reads points earned and that means that's how much, based on our students' performance or growth or data point, that we earn those points. And the system is based on a maximum number of points that you can earn in that indicator. And then, uh, there is a percentage of points earned and then what the state average percentage is. It'll start to make sense as we move through each indicator, okay? So, let's get started. Academic achievement. This indicator produces a performance index for both ELA and mathematics. It is reported for all students and high need subgroups. The tests or the assessments that are included in these indicators would be the SBA, Smarter Balance Assessment, grades three through eight, the SAT administered in grade eleven, and the Connecticut Alternative Assessment, the CTAA, given to primarily students with special needs. So, taking a look at what our results, um, be, I'll let you read through those numbers. I will not read every single line with every number. I will call your attention though, if you want an easy way to read this, on the, um, points earned, which is the third numerical number, and then the percent of points earned. Those are easy ways to digest each of these. How did all of our students do in ELA? How did our students with high needs do in ELA? Then again, repeated for mathematics and repeated for science. What I will identify here is that we have opportunity. There is a gap between how our students who are considered high needs are performing and then compared to all students. You'll see that, um, the percentage points earned for all students in ELA is ninety point five. One could celebrate that that's a high level of achievement there. But there is also a ten point nine, um, percentage point gap for students who are on high needs. You'll see that pattern actually trending in mathematics as well as in science. Now, we're going to move to academic growth. Academic growth uses SBA growth to standard model on a vertical scale. So, even though each grade is scaled differently on your score, I'll just stop for a minute. Grade three scores yield a different range of, let's say it's, um, two thousand to two, um, to twenty-four hundred are the, um, range of scores that a child can get. That is scaled differently in grade four because maybe it's going to be twenty-three hundred to twenty-eight hundred. And in grade five, it might be twenty-seven hundred to thirty-five hundred. So, in order to, uh, create a system that, uh, can measure growth, statisticians, not educators, um, take those scaled scores and they standardize them vertically so that you can take a look at how children are growing from grade to grade on the same test, even though it is scaled differently from grade to grade. So, these points are also assigned on average percent of growth target. When you get to the, um, students with English proficiency in literacy and in oral expression, those two lines are not based on SBA, but those assessments are based on the LOSLINGS, which is a language proficiency assessment that we administer to all students whose primary language or first language is not English. So, you will see here, as far as growth is concerned, we have, uh, movement, but likely movement that needs to be higher. So, if you compare our percent points earned to the state average, in some areas, like in English Language Arts, our growth rate is slightly behind the state average. You might ask, well, where do you want us to be, Dr. Kritaya? Thanks for the question. Um, most certainly above state average. So, we have, while there may be a solid number for all students in ELA, if you compare it to the screen before, at ninety point five points, uh, earned, but growth in ELA is not something that is a point of celebration, but a point of opportunity for growth for us, okay? Let's move to assessment participation rates. It is expected that ninety-five percent of our students participate in assessments. Now, you might say to yourself, but of course we would require all students to participate. At one time in the state of Connecticut, you did not have to test all students. In fact, some, many students through potentially a PPT process or other means were excused from that testing or there were a higher percentage of students actually taking an alternative assessment. So, the state kind of clamped down on that since starting this accountability system in two thousand seventeen and said that ninety, um, participation rates need to be at ninety-five percent or higher. And you will see on the next screen that we have a slight area of improvement there. Uh, we are hitting our ninety-five percent rate. We missed it by a tenth of a point for students with high needs in mathematics and one point one percent points for students, um, with high needs in science. And that number, uh, I think is easily attainable. We will just need to take a look at our students and, um, really take a look at each child participating in the assessment. Now, chronic absenteeism, um, is officially defined by the state as a percentage of students missing ten percent or greater of the total number of days enrolled. I will tell you that this number is, um, is going to be a concern for me. Uh, you'll see here on the next page, albeit a little difficult to read because of how this layout came out on slides. I apologize ahead of time. But, um, if you take a look at the percent of student, uh, points earned, it's thirty-six point four percent. You see that number there? For all students and four point five percent for high need students. That thirty-six point four is significantly low. If I take a look at the years past, um, we were scoring about eighty-six percent of those points available earned. So, in doing our own analysis, Mr. Brown and I have talked about this on numerous occasions, particularly in twenty-one-twenty-two. Now, remember, I gave you the context for twenty-one-twenty-two. At the start of last year, we were not the only school system having a hard time bringing kids back to in-person learning. If you remember those stories across the state, particularly high schoolers. Uh, so, we experienced high levels of chronic absenteeism and our high school staff worked diligently. We see a little bit of that carrying over into this year and not because of, um, a switch from an online platform to in-person, but because we are, we have young people dealing much more with mental health issues, uh, school phobia issues, um, issues that are facing our young people today in a post-COVID, COVID environment. So, chronic absenteeism is, um, something we should keep an eye on and something that we are working and will continue to work on increasing, uh, decreasing the number of students that would be identified as chronically absent, which means more than ten percent of our days. Okay, let's keep moving. Another indicator is preparation for college career readiness and it's based on the percentage of students in grades eleven and twelve only participating in at least one of the following during high school. So, two courses in AP or ECE, two courses in one of seventeen career technical education categories, and two work experience courses. And this is an area that we really excel in, um, as far as students participating in these types of courses. You'll see we earned a hundred percent of the points possible and, um, we still have work to do. Now, there is, um, there are two ways to look at access and that is open the door to all kids and know that some students may or may not hit a target of three or four in an AP test. Or limit access and get higher scores. We choose to go with open the door to all kids, let them try an AP opportunity and experience. And you see that sixty-six point six percent of points earned reflecting allowing all kids to take- an AP course in a test, knowing that some may not make the required three or higher. In the area of graduation, the state looks at those students considered to be on track, including freshmen earning at least five credits. So that is the indicator, by the end of freshman year, do you have at least five credits under your belt? That will indicate to the state, you're on track for graduating on time. A second indicator is the number of students graduating in four years or less. A third is the number of students in high-need subgroups who graduate six years or less. And then, a fourth indicator is a percentage of graduates who enroll in two- or four-year colleges. This is an area that we do very well in. You'll notice that our, all four indicators, we are earning 91.3 to 100% of the points available to be earned on this indicator. So we really make sure we get kids a solid program, and they need throughout high school to graduate on time, and with the support they need. And then in physical education and arts access, physical fitness is measured using the Third Generation Physical Fitness Assessment, that is given in grades four, six, eight, and 10. You'll see actually some of the results in the performance and profile report that we're going to go over soon. And you'll see that, starting in fourth grade, our scores are not very good, and by the time they get to high school, kids' physical fitness is improving, thank goodness. And then arts access is a percentage of students in grades nine through 12 participating in at least one dance, theater, music, or visual arts course in the school year. These results in physical fitness, we earned 73.9% of the possible points earned, and then 87% of the points earned. So we do rather well in the arts, and we'd love to see that physical fitness number increase. But that's more than just providing for PE once or twice a week, that requires a whole different lifestyle. You'll see in the performance profile, some of the assessments that they're given, sit-ups, running a mile, some things that I don't think some adults can do right now, but certainly something that we provide for support through our physical education program. And finally, the entire assessment system boils down to an accountability index. The index, as I defined earlier, is the percent of all possible points earned. So the points we've earned post-COVID, a year after COVID, is 74.3 points. You might be wondering, what was our last score before COVID hit? We had a nice increasing trend. We had hit 81.6 in 1819 year, and in this 2122 school year, our overall accountability index is 74.3. Here's a chart of the years prior to that. And then, one last index is the district's gap size, is the difference in performance index is reported for a non-high needs compared to high needs. It looks at ELA, math, and graduation rate. This chart indicates that we have not been identified as having a problem with performance gaps, even though I started off under indicator two, saying I think there's room for growth. According to the state standard, we do not have a performance gap problem, as indicated as gap and outlier, no, 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 no. Ms. Clenden, do you want me to stop and take questions here, or jump into the profile of performance?
Let's take questions on this first, I think it would be helpful.
Do you have questions from board members?
Ms. Erbey.
Thank you. For the chronic absenteeism page, can you just clarify, because I, so I understand, the 36.4%, does that mean that those were students that were absent less than 5% of the time?
So 36.4% does not mean it's 36.4% of our student body. It's just 36.4% of the points possibly earned. So this is an accountability system that is based on earning points toward an index, which was our 74.3. So it's cumulative, so based on 12 indicators, formulaically, you're earning points in each indicator. So we only earned 36% of the possible points, which is low. Compared to the year before COVID, we were earning 86% of the possible points, which meant we had fewer students who were considered chronically absent. We could, I think it's worth us talking about this in the future, because I feel like chronic absenteeism is hitting all of our schools just really hard right now. We've had that conversation internally about the number of kids that are missing more than the 18 days, I think it's, I think it's 18 days. I had Lewis, yep, okay. So to be chronically absent in Milford, you have to miss more than 18 days. That's a lot of days.
It is.
That assumes, I believe, a student who's here for the full year. You could, you could have a student move in half-year, halfway through the year, and they could be absent often, and still, and be chronically absent as well, but even if it's less than 18 days.
As long as you were registered with us on October 1st, right? That's what this accountability index is based on. Okay. And I also think, Ms. Erbey, as we get into the next report, we need to start digging into who are those kids? Where do they live? What's their socioeconomic background? All of that.
Thank you.
Yep?
Other questions? Ms. Duell?
Thank you. If I remember correctly, from last year, when we had this conversation, there was a discussion of increasing academic performance in the ability of stepwise, almost, some of our higher achieving students, it would be less, not that everything's about the points, but there's less room for some of our higher achieving students versus our high-need students in terms of academic growth and assessment, and ability to improve services. Is that accurate? And is that where we're kind of heading, in terms of looking at the academic growth, and where there is that 10-point difference between almost each section?
So I think, in improvement science theory, the higher level achieving you are, the more difficult it is to demonstrate growth, right? To get from 90 to 95 is harder than to get from 75 to 90, right? There's, there are cycles of improvement that make that easier and easier to measure. So, the higher performing we get as a system, and even as a kid, the more difficult it is to score higher points on some of those growth indicators. I would not say that is the factor when you're considering what is the gap between growth in high-needs and non-high-needs. I would say that, and funny, we're talking about coaching tonight, I would say that we have to break a pattern there of getting to those kids and accelerating their learning in a different way, that we're not doing just yet, so.
So, is there almost a map of students who are high-needs and chronic absenteeism, of them mapping over, of students where that kind of hits at the same point?
So one of the jobs of our current equity supervisor, Ms. Akampora, is to pull this data and drill down into demographically mapping out, who are the kids who are chronically absent? Who are the kids, you'll see in this next report, that are being regularly suspended? Who are the kids that are being expelled? Who are the, so we have, as a system, an opportunity to dig down into who are these young people, that we haven't really done that well. And that, I think, we won't have that ready in May, by the way, so. But that's our work ahead of us. So yes, I think, in future reports, we should be digging into that, the definition of high need, we should be here internally, we know the answer, who are those kids?
Right. Okay, great, thank you.
Ms. Wilboyton?
Dr. Kataya, and I'm sorry if I'm asking you to re-explain something that you already said, but numbers aside, because I am someone very numbers challenged, can you just, in layman's terms, explain what this academic achievement and academic growth reports say?
Yep.
Yes, thank you.
So let's start with achievement. And I'm just going to be layman-like, okay? We're doing okay. We can do better. That ELA number surprises me. I'm not sure how we got 90.5, I always expected it to be lower. And, in my next presentation, we will see that for the last 20 years, we've been okay, and we can do better. Our growth, I think, I think we need to focus in on our system of knowing where kids are, and establishing, not going back to one time where this board had numerical targets down to like the 100th, but internally, as leaders and teachers, having, understanding where kids are based on a system of internal assessments, and setting goals for kids, and knowing how kids are doing along the way, and not waiting for this report to come out. So this, in the growth area, we could do better there as well. So in each of these categories, ELA, math, I would say yes. When I'm taking a look at being below a state average, like that never makes the superintendent happy, right? But I'm also extending grace, because we tested kids a month after they took their masks off. Now, you, I, we, I think suffer a little bit from short-term memory, like on how hard COVID was for us. And there was a lot of rigmarole around that, if you remember. Mask on or off? How quickly do we let people in? Are we shoving, just shoving all the desks together right away? So I think it was February 28th, we took off masks. And that next month, literally, SBA is here. And so, I, I feel like this is a, hey, look what your baseline is, and there's room for improvement. You know? So, we're okay, we can do better. Was that layman enough?
That, yes, that helps a lot, thank you.
Ms. McDonough Suza?
Thank you. Can you just go into a little bit more detail, as, with regard to the assessment participation rates? The fact that high-need students were slightly below the 95% participation for math and for science, who's, can you remind me, who's choosing, like, is it staff at school that's choosing them to participate? Like, how does that, how does that work?
Mr. Brown, is it through the PPT process?
Well, all students participate in some tests. There is an alternative assessment, that a very small percentage of students are allowed to participate in. So those are students with the most significant disabilities and delays who participate in the alternative assessment, and there is very stringent criteria that the school team needs to demonstrate, to request that a student participate in the alternative assessment, and get approval from the State Department of that for that. So the only reason our number would be low would be if students' parents choose not to let them participate, or if they're absent on the days that the tests are given. We don't say that student's not going to take a test. Everyone must take either the regular or the alternative assessment.
Okay, so the
We don't excuse anyone from the test.
Okay, so the alternative assessment is included in these numbers as well?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, so it's not like by virtue of the fact of like, how many, like, like what the, what our students' disabilities are, like, you might not like get to the 95% because a certain number, just, they're, they're not able to take any assessment at all, like, you can't really, that's a little confusing to me, but.
Yes, but it's logical. You might think, right, you would think that some students wouldn't be able to sit and take the test. That's, that's why the state put in place this alternative assessment tool. And a lot of that is based on teacher observation, to give a ranking to the student, rather than having the student do a pencil and paper test.
Okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
There was, I think, my first year here in Milford, where our participation rate was in danger, because we had, for some reason, one of our middle schools, they kind of went through the parent mill, that we're not letting our kids take the SBA. We're not going to do this Common Core thing. Remember those days? So that also sometimes is a factor, that some parents are saying, oh, my kid's not taking a test.
Right, okay, right, thank you.
Mr. Farrow, do you have a question?
No, I was saying.
Mr. DeYoung?
Thank you. Dr. Kataya, we, I think, I know we haven't had this report in a couple of years, but, or this detail, but each year, I think it's important to just remind us what constitutes a high-need student?
Yes.
I'm not sure if you said that at the beginning.
I did. Economically, economic, challenging background, sorry, I can't even come up with that word, multilingual or facility.
Okay. Can you go into detail on what the assessment looks like for, to determine the growth rate, and, you know, why we might be seeing lower numbers? Especially because we're, our performance or our achievement seems strong, I'm curious as to why our growth might not be quite as strong?
Well, the ELA and math, district-wide, that's primarily based on SBA scores. It is based on a vertical scale, like I explained, so you can end up statistically being able to compare a third grader's score to a fourth, to his or her scored fourth grade, right? So there's growth there. We'd have to dig into an analysis of where are our kids not demonstrating growth? And that would be kid by kid, based on sort of an item analysis coming out of SBA. I will, I will say that I feel like we're already being responsive, in that we have revised curriculum and revised curricular experiences under high-quality instruction in our grades, which are now more easily able to be implemented post-COVID. So growth analysis, I think, is something that is part of what we're engaging in now, particularly since, and you'll hear about this in a little bit, that we have a data system up and running this year, where we can track how kids are doing in September compared to January compared to now. So rather than waiting for an SBA score that comes once a year, so remember that part too, right? It's this one, three-day assessment for kiddos, that we have opportunities to track kids more meaningfully over time.
Okay. I think that's really positive, and it's very, you know, I think you've talked about this in the past, it's very difficult to track that growth of kids, right? Because it's so up and down and all over the place. The other, the other question I had for you is, I'm not sure if it plays out in these numbers, but there's a lot of, from what I understand, a lot of mental health issues with students, in particular, taking tests at this point. You sort of, you sort of alluded to it, because they're coming out of masks and that type of thing, but just the overall sense of nervousness and uneasiness, especially with kids that might not have taken tests in the past, so do you think that's impacted these numbers at all?
I can't say, I don't know that I'm a recipient of those narratives. At least I wasn't last year. We're entering into assessment season, so SBA is coming on board, and SAT and AP are all coming, so I may have opportunity for live data coming soon. I think all of last spring was just stressful.
Right, right, yeah.
And there were some, if you remember, not everybody was excited to come out of a mask. Like, we had families, we had kids, they were scared. And that, that was the environment that, that these numbers are living in. So, I don't want by any means to make an excuse, but I just don't want us to forget the background of what, where these numbers are living.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Petrowski?
Can I just ask for a little clarification, again, between the academic achievement and the academic growth? When I look at 1A on the academic achievement, I see that we earned 90.5 points. When I go to the academic growth, our points earned are slightly less. Is that something that we should, we should recognize as, oh yeah, that's reasonable, because there's a lesser room for growth?
In ELA, I would make that connection. Ms. Petrowski? I don't know that I could use the same I don't know that I could use the same possibly for our high need students. You know, those indices are smaller in number. Albeit, you know, we should not be proud of those numbers. Those are pretty good numbers. They're above state average. But I think the higher that number, the 90.5,
Right.
That logic you just put out would make sense with one, with 2A.
Okay, so, so you could say the, the more we are above on the actual achievement, the academic growth may reflect a lesser opportunity for growth?
Yes, it may.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Doyle?
Just one clarification. I think it fits with Ms. Petrowski's question. Because this number is representative of the entire district, all through, yeah, starting in third grade. So this comes back to the earlier question is, I'm guessing, but I can't be sure, that there's differences between the 3 to 8th grade, the high school students in terms of gaps in achievements. And we're looking at the whole broad picture of the district.
Yep.
But is there a difference between elementary school, middle school versus high school in terms of achievement and online hitting the assessments?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, that's our internal work of taking a look at how is each school doing? Even within elementary. You have eight elementary all performing a different area, level, so. And that's why I can't explain to you statistically how this works. I think you guys have had the state expert come in and talk about the assessments. But they, they create standard measures on, and there are three very different assessments. The SBA, the SAT, the CTAA. And they're creating some way of representing that as a district performance index, so.
Can you connect this for me in terms of curriculum development in that space of how that's going to be? Kind of, if you're looking at eight elementary schools, that there are difference between A, B, and C, how does the curriculum reflect that to achieve better conclusive results?
Well, curriculum needs to be standardized and demonstrates what grade level expectations are. So the implementation of curriculum through instructional practice is likely where you'll start to see the impact on these scores, right? So we do take, how are we doing on these assessments? And ask ourselves, so are there any gaps in what we expect students to know and be able to do? That's not the only question, though. It's also, is there an implementation problem? That it may be in the curriculum, but somehow between the curriculum and the teacher and the kid, right? The instructional corps, what we call that, there may be, you know, something amiss there. So opportunities for professional learning, opportunities for additional progress monitoring tools, opportunities to review the curriculum, make sure it's better aligned with the assessment. So the assessment's based on state and national standards. Our curriculum is based on state and national standards. So the tighter that alignment, the more likely better performance. But with that said, I am never in the business of teaching to the test. And with SBA, that's harder to do than the CMT days. CMT days, there was just like kill and drill on standard number three in literacy, you know, making connections or something, right? Was that it? Yeah, see? Like you don't forget some things. And I remember every year, teachers teaching to that standard because it was the lowest on the test. And every year, we're teaching to that test and I don't ever want us to be in that business.
So what I think you're saying is that the curriculum work and the background work, the on-the-ground work is, will be reflected in time as we do more work and continue the progress, progress in those areas, in these test numbers that comes forward in there.
Yeah, my leadership theory is focus on the right stuff. Solid curriculum, high instructional practices, progress monitor the kiddos, provide them an, an environment, not just the kids, but the staff, conditions and environment to thrive, and this stuff takes care of itself.
Great, thank you.
Other questions? If we move on to the next piece of this. More riveting data. Okay, so I am not reading all of this to you. Yes, please pass it out. Thanks, Pam. There are eight pages of data. There are a couple of things I want to bring to your attention, so that's how we're going to roll right now. I'm not going to go to every single section. I'm just going to bring your attention to some of them. Okay, so let's just take a look at enrollment for a moment and not that we're going to dive into, oh, look, we have fewer kids. We know that. But I've had a little bit of fun in the last week, if you want to call it fun. I've been, I dove into a 10 and 20-year look back to our school system. And so I'll share a couple of those data points with you this evening, including during the coaching presentation. But if you take a look at the breakdown of our enrollment when it comes to race, ethnicity, you will see that our current population is 68.5% white. And that would leave us at 31.5% not white. But I want to take us back in time a little bit. So if you're, if you have a pencil, you may want to jot these numbers down. In 2001, 2002. So it's 20 years from this report, 21, 22, okay? 20 years ago, our school system was 89.7% white. Therefore, 10.3% non-white. I went to 11, 12, which was 10 years ago from this report. Our school system, according to state reporting, was 80.9% white. And therefore, 19.1% not white. Today, we are 68.5% white. We are increasingly, over 20 years, becoming much, much, much more diverse. We went from 10% two, 20 years ago to 31% non-white students. Those are data points we have to put in front of us as we move forward in what you were just talking about, Ms. Doyle. Curriculum, instruction, all of that, okay? I also want to bring your attention to the percentage of students who qualify for free and reduced lunch. And 20 years ago, in '01, '02. Now, the line, I'm going to bring your line, your attention to this year's line. It's still on page one. Still that same chart and it's just below the race, ethnicity breakdown. And it reads eligible for free or reduced price meals. The district is 20, 27.4. So 20 years ago, in '01, '02, it was 14.2%. 10 years ago, it was 20.7%. And in 21, 22, the state is reporting 27.4%. So over 20 years, we've doubled that number. I just have to wonder if that free and reduced number will grow exponentially after, based on this year's reporting. So we'll, we'll see till next year. So I, I think, understanding holistically as a board, as an administration, that our young, our families, our young people, our student body is changing. And it would prove us to know that as a city, actually, as well, okay? So we have some work to do under chronic absenteeism and suspension expulsion. We are working with Ms. Akampora to dive into those numbers, as I mentioned earlier. We have opportunity, and I'm, I'm worried because I think this expulsion number is going to exponentially change this year. We have had a record number of student incidents that actually aligns with one of our budget line items tonight. Everything's kind of related tonight, isn't it? So we have room for growth. We have a 4.5% rate of suspension expulsion. We'd really like to get that number down, but I'm worried that our students are struggling and demonstrating some behaviors that just are not in line with board policy and what we expect in young people. So that's an area for us to, to dive into and consider other interventions and support systems. The second page. Again, I'm not going to go to every single category. The college and career readiness courses during high schools, the strength of hours. We see young people taking advantage of that and doing well. I think there's always a goal to increase the percent of time that students with disabilities spend with non-disabled peers. So we're looking each year to increase that, and that's in the bottom right corner of page two. We are right there below the state average on that. I'll bring your attention to page three, top left corner. If you do a year-by-year analysis, you will see that this rate of identification is growing across the state and here in Milford as well. I remember the days when I worked in another district and we were happy with an 11 to 12% identification rate. And here we are, looking at 16%. I think, Mr. Brown, is this, I know the state average here says 16.3. I think this year it's even grown from there though, right?
It's, it's approaching 17% for this year, yeah. I think it might be 17.1.
Okay, I thought it had already broken the 17 number. I, I believe, agree or disagree, that we're going to be hitting that number if we haven't already?
We, over the last 20 years, we've been trending a lot step with the state average.
That you'll see on this page expenditures. You'll also see a breakdown on the bottom left, the percent of budget spent on special education. That is right in line with the state average. On page four, we have a breakdown of how our students do based on demographics, on district performance index, which is based on those assessments we just talked about. Again, here are opportunities for, to closing achievement gaps in our school system. We are working with Ms. Akampora and supervisors and school leaders to take a look at equity and access, experiences, and outcomes. Those are our three, that's our three-pronged approach to equity, particularly when it comes to our young people's experiences and outcomes in our system. So more to come on that as we move forward. In the bottom right corner is a breakdown of that physical fitness test I was talking about. You'll see how it goes from fourth to sixth to eighth to high school. And how gratefully we do better as the years progress. On page five, you'll see that our district scores very high at 94.4% in the bottom left. Of 11th and 12th graders demonstrating post-secondary readiness. And a number that really, really surprised me is persistence, which is measured right next to it on the right. That the class of '21, 75.1% of students attended college with a persistency rate of 83.3. Meaning, actually, kids stayed for another year beyond freshman year. And these are Milford graduates. Page six is a repeat of the next generation accountability system. We just went through all those indicators with you. And then pages seven and eight are narratives, which I'll let you read. It is required that every year, we provide the state narrative on what our improvement plans are, what our efforts are to reduce racial, ethnic, and economic isolation, and our efforts in equitably allocating resources among all of our 14 schools. Happy to take questions from that. The college entrance and persistence. So that, the entrance just, it doesn't reflect whether kids actually got into college, correct? It's just, it's the number of kids that actually attended? Yeah. Questions? Mr. DeYoung?
Thank you. I don't know if you intended to swamp us with data tonight, but success. The suspension and expulsion number that you pointed to, do we have that broken down by levels?
We have it in our system, yeah, but not on this report.
No, I know, not on this report. Is, is there a dramatic increase as you get to middle school, high school? Where does the, or is it not significant or not?
It is primarily a function of secondary education.
Okay, all right. All right, that was it, thank you.
Ms. Doyle?
Can you define truant or what would be truant under the state statute? On the first page.
Do I have that answer, Mr. Brown? Do you have that answer?
It's
Thank you.
Truant is being truant is being absent four days out of 20.
Okay.
That would probably should be true, to be classified as truant.
Okay, because it's fairly high for last year and I, I mean, pretty high. Last year, we also had that COVID, COVID, a lot more students were going out for a period of time before they used to isolate. So is there, is this part of the same reach out to identify students who are more productively absent and kind of moving that number down?
Yes, so currently, we're doing quite a bit for students who are productively absent or truant. And what we, we think. We have quite a bit of contact with the home. Our social workers and other staff will make home visits. Our school resource officers will make home visits in a friendly way. And to make efforts to get the students to come into school. There's a, there's a broad range of reasons why students are truant. It's not all for the same reason. And it's typically different types of family struggles. Or in large part, we see a lot of students with severe anxiety going to school. So it's a mix of many different reasons.
So in the number, is it 1,598 individual students who at least once during the year identified as, not identify, but could be categorized as truant? So one month, they could have come in, missed four days in 20 days. And then multiple times they did it over the course of the year?
No, I'm not
Sorry.
I'm not exactly sure on how those numbers are calculated. There's a rather complex formula that the state uses to determine, to determine number of days present and number of days absent. And I'd have to refresh on how they calculate that number.
Mr. Joe Cole may have an answer?
I think it's, it's per kid.
Okay.
You know, like, if you hit it three times throughout the year, you're only kind of wrong.
Got it, that's what I, I figured as much. And so it kind of goes in line with what we discussed in the earlier section about mental health issues and more of these, that there's, there's a lot of students struggling within the district.
If I could piggyback on that, but it could also just be a student that just got really sick and had a really bad case of the flu who's out for five days, right?
Yeah.
Especially in the context of last year.
Correct, yeah.
So, sure.
And this year.
And this year.
Yeah. I mean, not, not just COVID, but you all likely have also personally, people are just getting sick because we're not masked anymore. Some of these numbers may not improve this year. Just laying the groundwork in case that happens next year. Just in case.
Can I, I have another question, going back to the college entrance and persistence. I know we've spent a decent amount of time talking about various diversity, equity, inclusion, and all parts of it. And we don't, I, I think, when we look at the numbers of expulsions of male students and then this 20% gap between the female and male students who are entering college. And I can't tell if, I'm assuming it doesn't include community college because it's part of the National Clearinghouse and things like that. I know there's different opportunities, but it seems like the male students are entering college less and staying less in how long term.
According to the data point in front of you, that would be accurate. But I, we don't have any, like,
That's a national trend.
Right, and I know it's a national trend. And so I know we've spent some time talking about various other groups that we've tried to address. How are we kind of, are we trying to channel students to other means?
So, I'm glad you mentioned that. Like, I'm not going to force kids into college.
Right.
And I know that's like an indicator of success for school systems, but I'd rather kid go to a technical school, leave here with some work-based certified skill sets where they can go right into the workforce and be successful, and not rack up a bunch of debt after four years and not know what they're doing. Like, that's just not my goal, to increase four-year college entrance. For kids who want to, yes, but, so I'm going to say, hopefully one day they'll add, and kids that went into the workforce and started making $100,000 after two years, like, right?
No.
And a plumber or HVAC guy, because there are none of them around.
Right.
So...
I think that's kind of points to our goal of continuing these other pathways of careers and technical education that we need to continue to implement within our school district, because it's clear that male students are not going to college, to four-year colleges at the same rate as female students. And so we have to provide for all students, not just those students, and I think that's important data to see. But I would like to see the other half of the data if they gave it to us, but they obviously don't.
Well, we hope to, I just had a meeting today on Milford measures. One of the things we hope to capture are these career paths. So how many kids start in a career path in seventh grade, persist in one or two, what that means for what they do post us. So that, that measure may not be something we quickly capture, but it's something we have to start capturing in seventh grade. If a kid is expressing interest in seventh grade in X, Y, and Z, and he experiments with it throughout our system, what do they do with that then in 12th? Like, was there any connection? And I think that's a data point worth capturing over the next few years.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Will Boynton?
So for the record, these numbers I'm much more comfortable with than the other ones. And actually, I'm really interested in spending a little bit more time with them, because I do think that they, they tell a really interesting story about our, our school district. And I hope that we have the opportunity, if we have any more questions at a future time, after being able to digest that, we can come back and ask you. But I'm just wondering if you could briefly touch on page two, the section on educators by race, ethnicity. You know, our, our population of students is becoming so much more diverse. I'm wondering if you could just give us an overview on what we are doing to ensure that our educators are more diverse and we have more of them.
Well, we suffer from what the state experience, is experiencing. But Connecticut does not have a lot of educators of color, and the majority of our educators of color actually teach in cities. And under Ms. Kapazna's leadership, we've actually engaged in a teacher residency program where we onboarded two individuals of color this year, and through, at four feet, that person, those two individuals are spending the year with us. And at the end of the year, they will be certified teachers, and the deal is, we offer them a job and they stay with us. Now unfortunately, one of the individuals did not make the program, didn't see it through. So we hope to have one still, okay?
Yes.
Individual, and that's a start. We've also talked about our talent management and development approach to Ms. Kapazna going out actively recruiting, as opposed to just waiting for people to apply to us, and getting out there and going to universities where there may be higher percentage of individuals of color graduating for their, from their teacher prep program. So we, I think we have to go out and find them. But we also have to be a system that, that has a climate and culture where these individuals will feel like they belong. And we have work to do in that as a system. So this is an area of need. I even wrote here in pencil, area of need. And we need a strategy on that, that I'm hoping in our newly revamped HR department, or TMD, Talent Management Development, that we can be more intentional about this.
I hope so too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much for this report. We still have instructional coaching update, so we'll go to that, right? You okay with that?
Yep.
I'm going to stand though and do that part. Okay, we have our team here tonight. Thank you for allowing us to add this to the agenda. We felt it was really important to start talking about coaching, because everybody else is talking about coaching in the city of Milford. So we thought we should. Kidding, not kidding, right? I, I, I feel like I have to open up by saying that this is, instructional coaching is a key leadership move for me. I'm absolutely transparent with this board and our community and our staff about what the key levers are to improvement. We have a vision of the learner. We have invested in developmental relationships framework. We have a model for high-quality instruction. We believe in little L-leaders, or developing leaders in every single classroom to empower teachers to grow themselves and one another. And a key part to our growth and development in Milford Public Schools is instructional coaching. And so I, while I want to take the credit for that, I can't. Because the system already had the backing and the data to support this, and the system already had coaches in schools. We just took what was there and grew it. And we made a pivot, which we're going to explain tonight, on investing more in coaching rather than intervention. And intervention, to me, meaning waiting for students to fail, and then, whoo, got to get in there, as opposed to getting ahead, building capacity, working directly with kids that need us in a strategic leadership way. But let's go back in time, since we've already done a little bit of that this evening, okay? I'm going to take us back to 2013 for a minute. How many of you were on the board at that time? Ms. Glennon? Okay. So Ms. Glennon will remember, and maybe there were some people here during this time, right? In 2013, at the time, the District Management Council, today known as District Management Group, came and conducted a review of the school districts, particularly with a lens on special education opportunities, meaning what's going well in the world of special education, and where are the opportunities for growth? I should warn you, there are lots of slides with lots of words. We've broken every PowerPoint rule tonight in this presentation, but we felt like we had to because there's so much information to share, okay? And we will at times be reading to you from the slide, another no-no. Now here's one of those times. What did DMC say? They said to us, Milford Public Schools, you need to develop a clear and consistent vision for providing literacy instruction at the elementary level, based on best practices. That's 10 years ago. 10 years ago, we were told, you need to clarify the role of regular education teachers to take the primary responsibility, the delivery of core reading instruction to all students, including those with mild to moderate disabilities. Underscore regular education teachers taking primary responsibility. 10 years ago, we were told, we need to spend, kids should spend extra time on reading, sorry, we need to provide extra time on reading with skilled teachers of reading using data to inform instruction. This is also a chart that was in the report from DMC. It does an analysis of the number of reading interventionists in the school system, the total number of elementary students, the total number of elementary students struggling in reading. I want to pause for a moment, take a look at those two numbers. 3,000 kids at the elementary level, 1,000 kids struggling in reading. Did I hear a wow? Not good wow. 13 years ago, a third of our elementary kids below level. The student ratio per interventionist was 46 kids to per, to each interventionist. So, the text comes directly from the report. Overall, there is one interventionist for every 46 kids. Given the existing number of reading staff, it's possible for each reading interventionist to reach all students who struggle. So 24 interventionists rescuing 1,000 kids from their reading problems. That's what the report said we could do. To me, that's no way to improve student learning. Not by sending reading interventionists to turn the performance around of a third of our students. You know what they, they call that in undergrad school? It's not a student performance problem. It's a core instructional problem, when you have 30% of your kids not on level. And I'm not pointing at teachers. I'm pointing at curriculum. I'm pointing at potentially not having an instructional model that was consistent across 251 classrooms. But let's move on, because there's more information here, okay? In 2017, there was a coherence capacity review conducted by the Connecticut Center for School Change, also today, their name has changed, because there's a theme here. They're known as the Partners for Educational Leadership. We currently work with partners, by the way, in other areas. If you've heard of Dr. Stevenson, and I work with the NIC, et cetera. The purpose of the study was to assess the degree to which MPS is approaching improvement in a coherent and aligned fashion, and possesses the necessary capacity to achieve its improvement aims. Here are the findings. There's a lot, there are lots of areas of work being pursued with earnestness by people who are thoughtful, intentional, hardworking. That has not changed today. We still have teachers, we have leaders, we have coaches, who work earnestly every day. But instructional priorities were not clear in 2017. That there was a degree of urgency towards system-wide improvement tied to raising achievement that was inconsistent. There seemed to be many improvement strategies, but how they connected was not clear. There's variation in degrees of trust existing in the system. Collaborative practices within and between buildings and departments were not always evident. Communication lines, beginning with the central office and across buildings, were sometimes ineffective and confusing. Milford professional learning opportunities appear vast, but there are questions regarding the transfer of professional learning into classroom practice. Emphasis last bullet. A lot of PL. And Ms. Dr. Nobley is going to show you actually some research that shows, how do you get theory into a classroom? It's not by sending more teachers out to a good PD. Yep.
Can I make a quick point? 2017, that was the year before Dr. Gutaya came, and one of the things that we heard from staff when we were putting together our profile of what do we want as superintendent was all surrounding this work, the coherence work, and teachers being very concerned that this work was going to go away with the new superintendent coming on board. So just want to make that clear.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. 2019, the second year I was here now, we commissioned a literacy program review by a group called the Leading for Learning LLC. I'm going to do some reading to you from slides, okay? The review was done in the area of literacy, in that the program review, it would share that less than 30% of our students were exited from intervention, and there was not a systemic plan for how students receive support or from whom. Hit pause. 2019 was a year that we had interventionists in our elementary schools. Some had two, some had two and a half, some had three. Did I get that right? 30% of kids in intervention exited. In order to exit, the child has to demonstrate a shrinking of the gap between grade level work and where they were. That means catching up to grade level. 30%. Now let's just say, let's use our thousand number from 2013. 300 kids got out of intervention. With two to three interventionists at each building. You catching on? To learn more about this finding, the district did extensive research on the lack of long-term impact of a remediation model, particularly in the area of foundational reading. That phrase should remind you of the Right to Read Act. Foundational reading is key to the Right to Read Act that is before us. The findings show that a model of acceleration, I want you to remember that word, and a model which prioritizes teacher capacity around instruction, had longer lasting effects. Continued from the same report. Further, the review found that there's a need to brand coaching. What is it? How coaches help? What coaches do? What coaching is not? We started this work in 2019 and got interrupted in 2020. According to a teacher survey, given in this program review, 53% of teachers indicated that they knew completely what resources to use with the curriculum. Pause. Half of our teachers knew what curriculum resources to use. That's not enough. During the classroom visits, there was little evidence that teachers were given implementation resources to match the 2016 revision for grades K5. Pause. There was curriculum revision, and they weren't given the resources to do it. Thank you, Board, for over and over during my tenure, investing in classroom libraries, in investing in curriculum revision. It is possible that students are getting different variations of the curriculum in different schools, and even different classrooms in a grade level. Pause. One of the things you told me, the hiring board told me, sorry, not you specifically, but the hiring board, told me that there's variation, particularly among the eight elementary, in what kids have access to do as far as experience is concerned. And we wanted to make that more consistent. This, this review picked up on that. A common request in school after school was for the district to provide related implementation resources to match curriculum revisions. All right, let's take a moment to consume this chart, okay? I'm going to read the sidebar, and then we're going to look into the numbers. In a survey, teachers were asked to assess their capacity and comfort in delivering components of a comprehensive core literacy program. You will see the results from the teacher survey. The results highlighted are illustrate, are to illustrate what percentage of staff feel a strong sense of understanding and implementation, as well as percentage of teachers who feel they are unsuccessful implementing the component. The remaining responses fall in the good capacity range. The bold-faced items are areas that staff have indicated need more clarity. Very important point. A point to note is that phonemic awareness and phonics were listed on this survey for teachers to respond to.
Were not listed.
Were not.
Were not listed on the survey.
Thank you. Were not listed on the survey for teachers to respond to. Weak phonemic awareness is one of the key signs of dyslexia. Let's go into the chart for a minute. At best, 66, two-thirds of our staff at the elementary level feel strongly that they could implement core areas of literacy instruction. The list includes the core areas of reading. At best, 66% of our staff felt good about it, felt strong about it. That's not an indication of our staff's capacity. Those, those numbers point at the system, at the district's support of developing teachers. Put your eyes on word study for a minute. Word study is where... Word study is where teachers would be thinking phonics and phonemic awareness. Foundational skills to reading. Now, I'm going to have you go back to the DMC report in your mind. If this is the status of how teachers are thinking about instructional practice, is it any wonder that thirty percent of our kids were in intervention? We have to get to the core of instruction, not waiting for kids to fail. So, part of this next slide, some of you saw at a presentation, budget presentation I made in two thousand nineteen. I've added two charts. This is going to be a little bit of history in visual format. As I told you last week, I've been doing a little bit of history and I went back ten years and twenty years, okay? These are CMT results from two thousand one. So, around the sixties, the sixties, right? Sixties, the seventies, twenty years ago. This is two thousand eleven. Ten years later, maybe we made some improvement in sixth-grade reading. I'm going to do that again for you. Not much change over ten years. Same test, CMT, okay? So, we can call this consistent, or we can call this something less positive, right? Let's go down to a different test. Percentage of exams that scored, oh, this is AP, kids that scored three or higher from two thousand fourteen to nineteen, not much change over five years. Here's another one. Percentage of exams, exams of students that scored four or higher from fourteen to nineteen, not much change. Would you call that consistent? Here's SAT seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. Percentage of grade-level, grade eleven students at or above goal in SAT math. Consistent. SAT English Language Arts, eleventh graders, three years, consistent. SBA, English Language Arts, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and math. Am I making my point? We have been consistent for twenty years. We want progress, but we don't want change. And if we keep doing the same thing over and over, the next superintendent will be standing before you in ten years saying, "We have consistent results." I am trying to break that pattern. And the way we're trying to do it is we're going all the way to elementary school first. We've written curriculum, we have a model for high-quality instruction. Ms. Mara and her team have been providing professional learning through coaches, direct instruction to some kids, but it's not an intervention model, it's a different model, and it's changed for some people. It's still working with kids, but it's also working with teachers, through teachers, for kids. I'm going to give you a little bit more tonight about that. So, over the years, this is the kind of support we've had in Milford Public Schools. In the area of reading, we've had everything called a reading teacher, reading interventionist, remedial reading teacher, reading specialist, literacy coach. I asked Andrea Giantizio, who started teaching at Orchard Hills thirty years ago, "Do you remember any reading supporters?" She said, "Oh, yeah, there was a reading teacher." So, I have documented proof, thirty years ago, that there was a reading teacher in the system. We've had literacy coaches too. We've had a math coach at the elementary, not a math interventionist. And in 2021, we shifted all of our support without adding any FTEs, using the FTEs we have to shift to an instructional coach model. So, the district made a shift in spring of 21 to invest more directly into building teacher capacity through instructional coaching. The role of instructional coaches is to work with teachers on improving instructional practice while deepening content knowledge to ultimately increase student outcomes. Coaches also provide direct support to students. Interventionists did not build teacher capacity. They only worked with kids. And we didn't see the data, we didn't see the results of that twenty-four FTE investment in two thousand thirteen. I'm pretty sure, which I didn't do this homework, but I'm sure, I'm pretty sure we had more than twenty-four interventionists when we made this shift, but.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. Twenty-seven FTEs under the title Reading Teacher Interventionist. And at the time of that program review, thirty percent of kids were exiting. All right, so those numbers are something for us to consider. Twenty-seven FTEs, thirty percent exiting. We decided to make a shift. More about the shift.
Thank you, and good evening. So, just to continue to talk a little bit, I know Dr. Katia alluded to this, so this is just a slide that highlights some of the research that's been replicated time and time again on the effectiveness of coaching, instructional coaching in particular, compared to other forms of professional learning. So, as you can see, typically go to a PD, learn about some teaching thing. If you look at the last column, impact to practice, right? Actual instruction that gets to kids to increase learning. There's a zero percent impact in practice. Theory where the instructor might model something in the room but no kids, nothing. Theory, modeling, and then you try, you know, role-play it, minimal. But when you combine all those things and then you add the support of instructional coaching or a coach there, in the moment, side-by-side with the teacher, working with adult and children, as we've talked about, you can see the impact in practice. So, we're trying to, our theory, our model is to capitalize on that research and that I'm going to give you a moment. So, one of the things we've talked about is the ineffectiveness of the remediation model and so, and a little bit about moving to this acceleration model, which I know we've spoken to the Board about before. But just to give you a little reminder of the differences and what we're trying to do instead of remediating, so I'll give you a chance to read this, I won't read it out loud, and then I'll highlight a few points. So, there's some things in bold that I would like to draw your attention to and definitely are points to think about. If we go with the typical approach of remediation, of intervention, we're not going to be catching kids up and we're only going to be compounding the problem. This goes beyond program reviews and things that were done in Milford, but the national level. The idea of meeting students where they are, although it seems logical, right, is actually counterintuitive because what we're doing is we are denying kids access to grade-level content and opportunity. I like to equate it to, we're basically digging one hole to fill the other. So, taking the kid out of second-grade reading instruction or math instruction to catch them up on something they might not, some unfinished learning they have from kindergarten or first grade, that might work, but now they have a hole in second grade and I have to fix that hole. But when am I going to do that? Third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade? So, it's just, it's a tough process to get ahead. So, that's one thing to keep in mind. The other idea is that, and this particularly talks about coming out of COVID and working on unfinished learning from that, but more, even more in general, doubling down on the current strategy for catching students up will only widen opportunity and achievement gaps. You know, we've had some talk tonight about access and equity, and I would say that a remediation model and intervention model is an inequitable practice. We're denying kids access to grade-level content, we're denying them the opportunity to get the same access to high-level instruction that their peers are. We need to change and shift our thinking on that. We actually need to be putting kids on a fast track to grade-level work with the appropriate supports, not denying them. So, again, those are some of the things. And as we've talked about, pulling kids down the hall in a room to do work that's two or three years below grade level isn't going to do that. And we have this research and much other, much more like it coming out that shows that exact same thing. So, again, this is just a graphic to highlight what happens, right? So, we might start with a small gap, right, in grade two, and then we say, "Okay, we'll remediate, we'll try to catch kids up, meet them where they are, we'll fill in the gap." But again, problem is, and they miss grade two, now they're behind there and more. And then you see that widening in seventh, and then we get kids getting in high school and you see the kinds of inequitable access to higher-level coursework and other things that are affected. So, we need to do something different because this cycle isn't working. So, some key, just some, and I know we've talked about acceleration before, but just some key points, so what does that actually mean then? Okay, so if we're not, we're not remediating, we're not doing an intervention model, what are we doing? So, one of the things that we do in our work is prioritize grade level and particular content in each grade and say, "Well, yes, all the standards are important in third grade or fourth grade, but Common Core does highlight what are those key content standards and things that are really important at each grade level." So, we need to make sure that we're spending the most time in our curriculum on those things and giving kids access to those things. So, that's something that we do. Again, giving kids access to high-quality tasks, every kid. So, again, back, I don't know, when I was teaching a while ago, we used to have three different versions of the task, right? I'd give, we'd give one task to the quote-unquote "lower" kids and one to the medium kids and then one to the high kids. That's not what we mean anymore. Everyone gets the same task. What we differ and shade on, what we scaffold is the entry point for each kid on that task. Again, we've talked about this, I know numerous times, the Board, our approach to formative assessment, using those strategies to elicit evidence of potential unfinished learning and overall student progress. We have some systems, better systems in place to do that and respond in a more timely fashion. This is a big one. So, when do you address the unfinished learning, right? When do you help kids make connections to that grade-level work? In the moment, in core instruction, not walk down the hall. So, math example, if I have a child that has some unfinished learning with place value, they're in fourth and fifth grade, I might use the opportunity when we're working on multi-digit multiplication and division to also do some work with that child on that place value understanding while still moving them forward in the grade level. In reading, if I have a child that might have some decoding issues, so what I might do if we're working on, I still want to give them access to authentic, high-level, grade-level texts because I still want to work on their comprehension, so maybe they'll listen to the text or maybe it's a read-aloud. I'm not denying them access to that because they have a decoding issue. I'll work on that during a strategy group. So, that's kind of the approach of both kind of concrete examples that we're getting at. And then, again, we need to prioritize, and this obviously goes right down to our model for high-quality instruction, which we know the Board is support well versed in, we need to prioritize instructional strategies that publish student thinking. Kids aren't thinking, they are not learning. And what we find in the intervention model and the remedial model is that the teacher's working very, very hard, no doubt about that, but oftentimes it's the child is not, right? And it's more of a memorization, drill-and-kill, low-level type work. Again, back to the access issue. And that, of course, is not going to help any kid, but particularly kids who already have unfinished learning, it doesn't really make any sense to deny them access to those higher-level opportunities. And then finally, you can't do this work alone as a teacher, as we'll talk more about, and it would be unfair to ask. So, we have a tremendous amount of support in Milford Public Schools to support both students and teachers in doing this work, including coaches, which are pivotal in partnering with teachers in this work. And then finally, before I hand it over to Smoro, this is just a quick table that shows our class sizes at the elementary level, and the only reason we bring this up is to just show that we have, we have healthy class sizes in terms of being conducive for this acceleration model, right? There are, our class sizes are not at a point where we wouldn't be able, a teacher wouldn't be able to meet the needs of all the students within core content, specifically in partnership with an instructional coach. So, we have this here to just illustrate that. We actually have the structure for that within our class sizes right now because of your support in that work. And I'll hand you.
So, continuing with the history we have tonight, I'm going to take you through a little bit of our instructional coaching journey, and I'm actually going to start before the first bullet point. So, although it's small and hard to read, the first date on there is two thousand twenty-one, but I actually like to take you back to two thousand nineteen. As Dr. Katia shared in the literacy findings, there was a need to rebrand coaching. And in fact, we started that work January eighth of two thousand twenty. Of course, a few short months later, that work was halted to a stop. It was then that we came back together, and it was the fall of two thousand twenty-one that we rebranded instructional coaches. You may remember that we have four instructional coaches at every single one of our elementary schools. As the Board talked about before, or Dr. Katia talked about before, we know coherence is really important. So, it was important for us to have a consistent model of instruction at all eight elementary schools. The primary role of the instructional coach is to support students and build teacher capacity around high-quality instructional practices. In two thousand twenty-two, we worked on a vision and a model for coaching. We also were responding to our district's data. So, you'll remember, as Dr. Katia talked about earlier, we were just coming out of COVID, and in Milford, we noticed that some of our grade levels had been hit harder than others. So, we were able to use our instructional coaches to dive right into those grade levels and be responsive in the moment. Further, in two thousand twenty-two, we worked on developing best practices in coaching. We talked specifically about side-by-side coaching and how important it was to have a thought partner in the moment who could see what a student was doing and guide your practice. We then talked about the importance of coaching and the Right to Read legislation. As you'll remember, I stood before this Board several months ago and talked about some of the rebranding we are doing in foundational literacy. When we wrote that hundred-and-eighty-page waiver, coaches were a key factor in moving these changes in foundational reading ahead. Not only will they support curriculum changes, but they'll also help grow teacher capacity around students and around how we teach foundational reading in this shifted culture. We're currently looking at coaching in action. We've moved towards small cycles of continuous improvement for both adults and students. We think it's really important to break the idea of a traditional six-week cycle where a student may not make growth and instead think about how we're moving this student, as Dr. Nobley said, in an accelerated fashion through the curriculum towards grade-level standards. We also recently had the Performance Matters Data System updated. Because of that, we are now able to look more intentionally at our own Milford Public Schools data and look for trends across the district. Our coaches have developed a call to action and they are beginning to develop a coaching framework. They will continue to build routines around data as well as how all students' needs are being met. And finally, coaches are working with their leaderships to talk about student achievement. So, the report you had earlier, as Dr. Katia mentioned, we are starting at the elementary level to talk about student achievement. We don't want any surprises on the SBA. We know that we have work to do, particularly in the area of foundational literacy, so we want to have checkpoints all the way along so we make sure that we know where all of our students are. One of the things we are most proud of is that those teachers who are really open to coaching and have an instructional coach, in fact, we have some of them here tonight, are really, we're seeing that success and that increased student outcome when teachers are open to coaches coming in their room. On the next slide, I'm going to give you a little bit of a glimpse. This is one of our literacy assessments. It was given in February, and this is one of our Milford Public Schools, one of our Milford Public Schools. You'll notice the green and yellow are below level, excuse me, the red and yellow are below level, the green and blue would be meeting level and exceeding level. And the important part to notice here is that now with the updated data platform, we're able to disaggregate our data and we're intentionally able to make sure we're meeting all students' needs. We also are able to look at our data and see where instructional coaching is at its finest. One of the things we are very proud to say is that when we see increased teacher capacity because they've worked with a coach, we're already seeing increased student outcomes. Finally, we thought it was important for you to hear from some voices other than ours tonight. So, we have a cadre of teachers and coaches who are going to share some of their experiences with you around instructional coaches. So, I'm going to add. So I'm going to ask Meg Delmonte to come up first. Meg is currently an instructional coach at Pumpkin Delight. She has a phenomenal history in the district, which she will tell you a little bit about, and she's going to share some of her ahas around instructional courses.
I do much better in front of kids, so I apologize now. My name is Meg Delmonte, and I've been in the district for 16 years, having taught kindergarten for 11 and a half years before leaving the classroom to become a reading interventionist. As a reading interventionist, my case will range from 20 to 30 kids each year, depending on the need. We would bring the most developing kids to our classroom and work our magic for 30 minutes five times a week. The kids would then go back to the classroom, where the teachers really had no idea what we were doing with them. I remember having conversations with teachers about students in intervention, and so often they would say, we don't see that, we don't see them doing that in our classroom. They're struggling while in the classroom. Why was the magic only working in my classroom when not the teachers? In 2021, as the district moved away from the interventionist, I applied for the coach position. I must admit that I was really worried about this. We had just come out of COVID, and we knew kids were behind. How is this going to work? Is this the best decision? Then I began to have aha moments. My first aha moment was when Beth and I sat down to do some side by side research and development on what could be an acceleration model. We worked with three fourth grade boys that had been behind and had been in intervention since kindergarten. We gave them grade level texts and listened as they read. Boy, were we surprised. They did much better than I had anticipated, having known these boys fairly well for the past three years. We really analyzed their errors and started to have conversations about, while each error is important, some were more important than others. And we, when we started to look at them differently, we were really able to pinpoint their needs. After that, we met with their teachers, discussed our findings, and made a plan for the students. As a coach, I used a gradual release model. I went in to model a small group for two weeks while the teacher watched me. Week three, the teacher and I taught the group side by side, and week four, the teacher took over the group while I watched. How powerful it was for the teacher to take ownership and know exactly what to do and how to meet the needs of her students, instead of me taking the group down the hall to work my magic. That was last year, and I'm happy to say that the three boys are currently still unravable. My next aha moment was when I participated in the district's lifting HQI meeting last year. We were discussing the learning pit and productive struggle. And I was, as I was listening to how we need to make sure students struggle and how we can't overschuffle to them, you know, build the bridge over the learning pit, I sat there red in the face. How often did I handhold the students in intervention and build the bridge for them? No wonder why the classroom teachers were saying, we don't see what you see when they're with you in the intervention. But that was my job, right? These were the most struggling kids, and my job was to help them. I started to realize I didn't really help them at all, that my 30 minutes of handholding with no support in the classroom hadn't helped. No wonder why we saw kids enter intervention in kindergarten, and most of them were still in intervention in fifth grade. Something was broken with our system. As the coach, excuse me, as a coach, I had the ability to build teacher capacity around literacy skills. I worked side by side with teachers, analyzed data, and think about what students need. We worked together to plan out lessons, do side by side teaching, often using that gradual release model. The difference? The kids are in the classroom and have opportunities throughout the day to put these strategies into practice. The teacher knows what all their students are working on and can tap into that during all parts of the literacy block. Teachers are understanding the importance of these foundational skills, the why behind why we are teaching. They are gaining knowledge of high leverage routines and are making shifts in their classroom that are bettering all their students. They are adding to their toolbox of strategies to help their most developing students. They are making decisions based on what they see from their students on a daily basis. No longer are teachers in the dark about what their students need and how to give it to them. Some of the teachers I've worked with over the past two years have said, Meg, I've never seen them transfer these skills as much as they, as they have been. They're even carrying it into their writing. The students aren't seeing their reading instruction as something separate than what is being done in their classroom because they aren't leaving it. They have access to a teacher who knows how to support them and can help them throughout the day. The routines and tools they use in small group are the same that they do in whole group instruction, just tailored to the skill they need. The students aren't missing access to grade level curriculum. They are receiving that exposure that they all need. I've already seen the change in our current second grade students. We had students entering, entering second grade as developing students. At the beginning of the year, myself and the other coach, along with the teachers, analyzed data and made a plan to meet the students' needs. We went in to model what a small group consists of and how to support their needs throughout the day. The teachers have been continuing this work, and because of that, in the winter of 2023, we had 23% students developing, 13% meeting, and 63 exceeding our reading benchmark. I know that as we continue to build teacher capacity, the less developing students we will see. And I can't wait to see where our current kindergarten and first grades turn out.
I'm going to ask Teri to come up next. Teri, again, is a wonderful instructional coach. She also happens to be at Pumpkin Delight. Teri has the unique perspective of being a former math coach when math coaches were the thing, and now the shift to instructional coach.
I thought you were going to say I have the benefit of being old. I've been here a long time, for 24 years. I've had a lot of hats that I've worn. I've been a reading specialist. I've been a classroom teacher. I've been a math coach, and now I'm an instructional coach. So I've seen a lot of teacher development happen in Milford, and I feel like a little bit in the history mode here, I'm kind of going back from my own point of view of how that's changed for me from that development perspective. When I started, professional development was delivered through district-wide programs. We'd come as a whole grade level or a whole district. We would listen to the expert about whatever it was we were finding out about how to be an expert in at that time. And then we'd go back, and we'd pretty much do the same thing that we did last time. Any old people over here know what I'm talking about. I'm sure I learned something each time, but I don't think it made that great of an impact on any of my instructional practices. At some point, we stopped gathering as those large groups, and we kind of stayed to our own schools. We met as a faculty. We did our professional development that way. But it was still something I might take a little extra out of, but I didn't really feel like it was meeting my personal needs. When the coaching model came to Milford, even before I adopted Katia, because I've been here a long time, it was a little more personal. There were, I think, four math coaches for eight schools, no literacy one. There were literacy coaches, that's true. See, I don't really remember because we really meet with them very often. There were a lot of teachers, not a lot of coaches, not a lot of time to develop with them. When we did meet with them, it was mostly as grade level. Again, I'm sure they were helpful to me, but I didn't come away with really big changes in my instructional practice. Mostly, they focused on the content. They talked about programs. They talked about how we could take the curriculum we have and deliver it to the students in front of us. Not a whole lot focused on me and where I am in my practice and how do I move forward. Now, coaching in Milford, as Meg very well said, is very personal. I can meet with a teacher. I can meet with a grade level of teachers. I can meet with a whole school. I can meet with a teacher every day in their room about the kids in front of them right there and figure out together, what do we say to this child to move them along the learning progression? Or what do we, what little shifts can we make in the instruction that will make huge differences for the whole class in front of them? We can do this daily. We can do this weekly. Sometimes we do it in the hallway as we're passing by, and teachers will be like, wait, wait, I just want to ask you, like, this kid, I'm not sure, this is what happened yesterday. What could I say today? And we're able to develop these relationships that, working together, we're making more moves than we did in the past. We also do professional learning with the whole staff. Again, like I said, we do it in quick conversations in the hallway. We work in classrooms daily or weekly. Whenever teachers are looking for someone to hold up a mirror to their instructional practice and show them how they might shift things or tweak things to make it better.
Next, I'd like to bring up Marsha LaPett and Gina Jenkura. So Marsha is a newer instructional coach to Milford and has been a coach for a long time. And Gina is a newer teacher. They are both from Live Oaks, and I'm just going to highlight Gina is going to be our HQI live teacher this summer. So we are very proud of both of their work together.
First of all, thank you so much for allowing us this time and squeezing us into your evening's agenda to share a few of our coach teacher experiences. Instructional coaching is part of a growth model that involves personalized professional learning for teachers around current research-based best instructional practices, which in turn supports student achievement. This is accomplished when coaches and teachers collaborate. We become thought partners in supporting the comprehensive development of teachers. We reflect on teaching practices to enhance elements of high quality instruction, and we teach side by side. We reflect and respond to evidence of student learning. The primary role, excuse me, the primary role we have as coaches involves instructional support. And this includes three main areas: responsive instruction, curriculum support, and building background content. When we are talking about responsive instruction, it involves analyzing student data and making decisions based on those needs and the data, whether it's for the whole classroom or individual students. The curriculum support happens, we are, when we are unpacking units and working together to examine the standards and skills closely, to understand the expectations, and teachers and coaches discuss high quality instructional practices to meet the needs of the students in front of them. Additional support involves building background content. For implementing and integrating components of curriculum, it's essential for coaches to maintain and develop all teachers during a shift in practices that aligns with current research for learning. In literacy, we've worked closely with teachers in foundational reading to strengthen current literacy practices. And this year, it includes phonemic awareness with Hagerty, the Milford Public School phonics that's been developed, sound walls, and literacy workstations.
So we thought you'd love to hear about what it looks like in my classroom to help you understand a little bit more about how important my, our coaches are to us. The following is just some of the work that we've done alongside coaches. We've examined the Hagerty assessment, which gives us information about the student's phonemic awareness, and it determines the next steps for the class as well as for small group instruction. In our second grade opinion writing unit, we could focus still on writing opinion. It shifted to highlight places in our Milford community and incorporated students' interest to encourage engagement. We incorporated components of high quality instruction, such as we did an inquiry sort, a fact and opinion. The students generated their own success criteria. They analyzed samples of other opinion writing, and then the students took their success criteria and came up with a personal goal for themselves. The coaches also supported in the implementation of new literacy components, the sound wall. Coaches came in and set up the sound wall for us. They continue to provide professional learning and demonstrate routines to utilize in the sound wall with our everyday learning. They also help develop workstations, which are new in my classroom this year. I've had support from the literacy coaches and our STEM educator in the building to help set up and implement these in the classroom. And both are going so well that we've had visitors from other schools come to see and discuss the literacy practices with us.
And another area of support involves a process surrounding student acceleration. And coaches support teachers in consulting capacity, which includes analyzing data and accessing additional assessments that provide more in-depth information about the student and to target the instruction that they need. We provide additional instructional approaches and strategies to support the teacher in meeting those needs, and we often use demonstration and side by side teaching for practices that are quite possibly new for the teacher and as they get implemented, where they're very alongside them throughout that process. And we follow that with continued conversation around the student response and their progress that the students are making.
So I have students in my class this year who needed more intensive support, so I met with the coaches. We determined that more information was needed to figure out the next steps to help the student. So the coaches administered a reading assessment that I was unfamiliar with, and then I administered a word assessment based on phonics skills. Through collaboration, we were able to analyze the assessment and then determine the next instructional steps for the students. Side by side instruction has helped me learn new approaches to instruction and even implement a comprehension building program that's going to help my student obtain necessary skills to support their learning. So our final thoughts for tonight. Teacher education programs do not prepare teachers adequately for every instructional scenario involving students and their learning. Coaches support new learning and current best practices for teachers with all levels of experience by building teachers' understanding of content, adding to teachers' instructional toolboxes, and working alongside us throughout the process. I was able to accelerate and grow my students when working alongside a coach to gain knowledge and try new instructional approaches to meet the learning needs of my students.
And finally, we have two classroom teachers from JFK. Sydney Fielding is a grade one teacher, and Alicia Curia is a grade four teacher. They're going to talk a little bit about their experience of instructional coaching too.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. My name is Alicia Curia, and I teach fourth grade at JFK, as Ms. Moro said. And I wanted to speak to you because I've had very positive experiences with our instructional coaches. I've been at JFK for three years. I had an instructional coach assigned to me immediately when I came, and she has been a significant support. They have been a significant support in helping me to improve my own teaching practice and best reach the needs of all my learners.
I'm Sydney Fielding, and I teach first grade at JFK. I taught at JFK for six years, and before that, I taught at Cap Can Meadow for three. Like Alicia, I, to attribute a lot of my growth over the years, the relationships I built with my instructional coaches. All the coaches I've worked with have helped to build my capacity to provide high quality instruction for students as well as strengthen my teaching pedagogy. We'd like to take a few minutes now to share specifically how our coaches support us in the classroom and the impact that support has on teaching and learning.
And some of these are very similar to what has been mentioned, so that's great. The first thing we do with our coaches is we meet on a weekly basis to talk about our own teacher goals and where we want to see our students grow. So this centers around best practices, setting goals for ourselves, and then we also talk about data that we want to collect in order to drive our instruction further.
Our coaches help us set personal goals based on areas that we want to improve on. They really meet us where we are as teachers. For example, last year when I taught second grade, it was my sixth year teaching second grade, I was really comfortable with the content and the curriculum. My goal for a portion of that year was to get better at intentionally planning lessons by thinking about potential student responses and what my feedback or coaching moves would be to those responses. Through collaboration cycles, lots of side by side coaching, and just the relationship that I built with my coaches in the meantime, my feedback and my ability to anticipate student responses improved greatly. Fast forward to this year, being new to first grade, my goals, especially in the beginning of the year, once COVID restrictions were lifted, I really wanted to create a classroom space that promoted student agency and promoted learning. My coaches were on it. Beginning of the year, we were rearranging furniture. We set up classroom visits to other schools. Who can I connect with? Whose classroom can I go see? They started monitoring and collecting data on how things were going. We made plans, like Alicia was saying about data collection, and my first graders are thriving in their current classroom environment. My coaches met with me where I was in both scenarios. They supported me, pushed my thinking, encouraged me, collaborated with me, and connected me to people I could learn from. I've grown a lot from experiences like this with instructional coaches.
Same, and we've mentioned the data that's collected. There's two forms of data that our coaches look for and talk about with us, so I'm speaking to data collected about my own teaching practices. These are things that I want to improve, teaching moves that say I want to promote agency in my students, to move from our whole group instruction and get started right away with minimal transition time, or I want students to turn to each other first before turning to me and try to solve their own problems. We come up with a coding sheet that the coaches will then come into my room, and they'll watch and code what my students are doing in the moment. And this is super valuable because when I'm with a small group of students, I cannot possibly see what's going on in the rest of the class. But to have that data that they've taken for me based on my own goals to then review later, at our next collaboration meeting, we debrief, and we go over together. They're not judging me. They're looking at it with me. This is what you said, this was what your student did as a result. What can we do better? How can we improve your practice to help them? And then also go over the data of what the other students were doing when I wasn't with them, so I can see my next steps. I know Ms. Moro, I believe, mentioned the many cycles of learning. So this is like a cycle of learning for me, that I can then make a new goal and move forward. next.
We also spend a lot of time with coaches, kind of like Gina was saying, looking at more formal data and assessments. Recently, as a first-grade team, we sat down with our coaches to look at some data from a reading assessment we administered in order to determine some next steps for struggling students. First, we looked at who are some kids who are struggling with the assessment performing below grade level? What structures and supports are already in place? Are any of these kids in SAT? If they're not in SAT, what's already happening in the classroom that we can grow from? From there, the coaches then offered to come in and model any instructional strategies that we needed help with in our classrooms, or they said they would come in and work directly with students to kind of check in and see, are they applying the strategies that I'm teaching independently, that extra set of eyes, that extra set of hands? I think having that in the classroom really creates such like an environment where we all know what's going on, and we're all working together to meet the needs of our students.
So similar to what Sid said, teaching, that's another thing they do for us. They come in and they co-teach with us, and it's been mentioned before, but that is very valuable because sometimes a student will say something and you just, you can look to them, they're right there. What would you do in this situation? Help me to learn so that next time I'm in this situation, I can use that. So they'll come in, they'll co-teach with us, they'll model efficient strategies if we'd like them to, they'll watch us and suggest alternatives. So I guess my biggest example was when I was a new teacher. This is my third year teaching, so when I came in as a new teacher, I had a coach assigned to me that came in two to three times a week, and she co-taught with me, and then gradually stepped out. And just, you know, small tweaks in the language that I learned from her, small tweaks and feedback I would give to students, I really saw them grow from that.
I think it's also important, and I know a few of you mentioned this as well, that our coaches provide us with a lot of professional learning. Not only do coaches collaborate individually with teachers and with grade levels, but they're leaders on our Wednesday meetings, our staff meetings. In addition, during collaboration time, they help us unpack new curriculum. We read it, we discuss questions and wonders, we intentionally start planning what our teaching moves are going to be, what feedback are we going to provide to students, what are the students' needs with this new set of information and curriculum. Being new to first grade this year, having the coaches as a resource, and Alicia's new to her grade level, I don't think I could have navigated all of it alone. Having our coaches there was crucial and so important to help us throughout the year. And I feel like even teachers who aren't new to a grade level benefit tremendously from this support because new curriculum is always coming in and out. So having that support person and that other person to work with, with that new curriculum, has been like the most amazing thing.
Which is our last point to make. They simply provide support. Nobody wants, I don't think anybody wants to feel like they're on an island alone in the classroom with no support. And so that's the biggest thing for me. They're there to celebrate my success, they're there to help me if something doesn't go as planned, and to work on how we can make it better. They also connect us to other classrooms. So I know Sid, I think he's going to visit Gina in her classroom really soon, and then we also do this within our own building. So I was able to have a lab site in my room where 10 teachers came to watch me. Sid was a facilitator for one of them, so they connect us to each other. They help us build relationships with other teachers in our building that we might not normally work with daily, and they facilitate classroom visits in general.
Yeah, so we hope that we've been able to highlight some of the valuable experiences that we've both had with our instructional coaches and the impact that those experiences have had on teaching and learning in our classrooms. Thank you.
So just a couple of points to cover. A couple of common themes that I, you know, I picked up on, I'm not sure if you did. Number one, I couldn't help but think about that coherence audit, and I couldn't help thinking that we had four different schools tonight, or three different schools, who don't all talk to each other on a very regular basis, but yet the through lines were really prevalent. We talked about some ways that we are directly supporting students. I heard several times that we are side-by-side in classrooms and moving students along learning progressions. I heard another model is that we're consulting around student data and deciding what next steps to be. Another move that several people talked about was the gradual release model, working directly with students so that teachers can see how to best support the students in their classrooms. We talked a little bit about another through line of coherence was the small continuous cycles of improvement for both students and adults. And finally, we talked about the benefit of co-teaching and having that thought partner in the moment to help you refine your practice. We know that this is not in 251 classrooms yet, but we also know that when we have teachers who are open to working with instructional coaches, we are seeing the benefits, and you've heard it directly tonight from the teachers who are willing and open to have those dialogues with their instructional coaches. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Happy to take questions with Gwynn. Questions from board members? Ms. Erby?
I have a question for the teachers. How do you think the students see the instructional coaches in the classroom?
As another teacher.
Just another teacher?
They love when they come in. They like, it's like a big deal.
Not interrupting to them. Jesse's?
And they are teachers. Coaches are in the teachers' bargaining unit. They are officially teachers.
They are teachers, right?
Yep. They are, you know, side-by-side teachers developing their own craft. I think a little bit too, if we're going to speak honestly, that coaches are also growing as teachers are growing.
Ms. McDonough Suza?
Thank you. So you ended by saying that teachers who are open to working with these coaches are really seeing the results. So I guess my question is, what about the teachers who aren't open to working with these coaches? And in that case, if the teacher isn't open to working with the coaches, do the coaches still get into the classroom to help the students?
Absolutely. So we believe, when we rolled out instructional coaching, and we talked to the board before, we believe in coaching for all. So we believe that everybody has an entry point. So we know some entry points are easier than others. We know some people, the entry point is their students. So by having conversations in SAT or by having conversations around student data, we know that that's an entry point. But then we have teachers like Gina, and Anne Marie is here too, but didn't see, and Sydney and Alicia, that are all looking to grow their personal practice. So those are the teachers where, when we say they're open to it, you know, Alicia talked, I think, a little bit before, by asking the coach to give her feedback. Those are the kinds of teachers where we're seeing the most success. But every, we believe in the model for coaching for all, so all coaches work with all teachers, including our specialists as well. We didn't touch on this tonight, but our specialists and our special education will get coaching as well.
So are each of the coaches assigned to certain classrooms in the school, or how does that work? Or any classroom can see any?
Yeah. We're definitely not assigned. Some of it happens organically, like through SAT. We do, in our school, we have weekly collaboration meetings, so a lot of it comes out of those meetings, whether it's with math or ELA, a meet will come up, and they'll be like, oh, let's work on that, and so then we'll start something. So it's, we're not assigned, it's not in our school.
Again, that model of coherence, there's, it's not a, it's not an assignment of a coach. That's not where we deploy coaches. We deploy coaches to grow instructional capacity.
But it does happen at different levels and different entry points for different teachers and different grade levels.
Okay, thank you. And the presentation was great, and I enjoyed hearing Kamal. Congratulations. So thank you.
SAT is student assistance?
Yes.
Mr. Dion?
Thank you. I also appreciated the presentation. It was very interesting. Could, Ms. Morrow, before I get to my main question, could you just sort of go over this chart a little bit that's at the end of the presentation?
Which one?
This one?
This one?
Current reality, three to five. Can you just kind of explain? I don't know why I can't really interpret it.
That's fine. So one of the ways, as we mentioned before, we've recently onboarded a new data platform. One of the advantages of the data platform is that we have a variety of literacy assessments, right? We want to make sure we have a well-rounded profile for students in the area of literacy. What we're highlighting here is that when we see instructional coaching at its finest, we're actually now able to look more specifically in the data platform to see the direct correlation to student outcomes. So you'll see on the chart to the column to the left, excuse me, is our, is current grade three in Milford Public Schools, a current grade four in the middle, and a current grade five all the way to the right. So again, what we're demonstrating is that as we're able to look at data more specifically with the onboarding of the data platform, and our coaches are able to talk with us about who they're most working with and how that's going, we're able to see the correlation between the increase of student outcomes and also the increase of teacher capacity. So they're kind of going together is what we're noticing.
Can you just explain the red, yellow, green?
Oh, yes, of course. So red would be students who are not meeting. Yellow would be students who are approaching grade level. Green is grade level, and blue is exceeding grade level.
Okay, so this is one particular school?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
One test in February.
Yep. We just gave you a snapshot. We're seeing this in others.
From this past February? Okay. So there's not, I mean, I want to just make sure I'm reading it right because I don't want to say, it doesn't look like there's a giant jump, at least between third and fourth grade, for instance, so.
So these are all separate classes.
Okay.
So we're not monitoring, it's not cohort to cohort, it's not grade three to grade four. This is our, one school's current third grade class, one school's current fourth grade class, one school's current fifth grade class. So what you're seeing is a snapshot of just that one assessment in February. So we're not showing you the fall, the winter, and the spring.
Right.
We're just showing you the impact of coaching on student outcomes.
And how do you, I guess, let me ask you, how do you read this? Right? Because I'm not getting that correlation from the chart, so how do you?
Because she knows who the teachers are.
I know who the teachers are.
And she knows who's getting coaching.
Okay, but that makes sense.
There's a particular teacher that you can tell, the 94% grade five, that teacher has engaged in multiple coaching cycles throughout the year.
Okay.
So sorry, I know who the teachers are, so I can tell that because this teacher has engaged in multiple coaching cycles throughout the year, of course, this is her literacy data, but it could also be numeracy. So because of that, you can see the correlation with the 94%.
And you have the same data for numeracy?
I do.
Okay. That's helpful.
Sorry.
That's okay. So I wanted to ask, sort of piggyback on what Ms. McDonough Suza was asking about how coaching is implemented classroom to classroom, because as you talked about, there are teachers who are entering it at different levels of comfort. And so in this, in this school, if you could just talk about, from a practical standpoint, in this school, how it's determined on a class-by-class basis? Is the teacher saying, I'm only comfortable with SAT, you know, entering it through SAT? Is the principal saying, that's not good enough? Could you just talk about exactly how that process works, even if you just want to use, you know, a general?
Yeah, so we, Dr. Pataya talked earlier about the improvement process. So we're using that as sort of our coaching framework. What we're hoping to get to, and again, as you noticed in the timeline, we're still in development in some of these processes, processes, excuse me, COVID has stunted us a little bit with this. So what we're hoping to get to is that the leadership team, who's mainly made of the principal, the instructional coaches, the teacher leader sometimes, and sometimes school counselors, will look at student data, and then from that student data, they'll sort of identify their trends within the building. They'll identify a current reality, they'll identify areas where students are really excelling, and they'll want to look at, why are those students excelling? And then that will be the start of the conversation. And then instructional coaching is a great way to build all teacher capacity. So in some instances, it may be around student data. There may be a conversation when Mrs. Laput sits down with a classroom teacher, and the classroom teacher says, oh, I've got these four students, I've tried everything, I don't know what to do. That may be the entry point. Another teacher may have, like Mrs. Kuria, may say like, I really want to be responsive, and I want to plan my feedback. So that may be her entry point. The principals are not deciding the entry points. We really, as Mrs. Laput said, we really want it to be an organic process. We're not looking to force coaching on anybody. We're trying to understand where teachers are and be there as a level of support for what they need. So some teachers are really great at advocating for what they need, like our teachers here tonight, and other teachers feel a little bit more hesitant. Some of it's for personal beliefs, some of it's because they aren't sure why instructional coaching. So this gives them an opportunity. It gives Mrs. Laput a foot in the door, or Mrs. Delmati, it gives them a foot in the door, and then once they're in the door, they'll say, well, did you think about this? You know what? Can I model that for you? Can I show you how that might look? So they use sometimes the SAT data as an entry point to get a foot in the door and talk about students and talk about how to support students, because ultimately, that's what we're here for.
I just, I just think that the data is so stark in the difference between classrooms that don't engage in instructional coach, with instructional coaches, and those that do, that there's got to, and I appreciate the need to allow it to happen organically. There's got to be a way that we can accelerate it. I know you guys are, I'm sure, thinking about it, but it just seems to me that that's like, almost like mission number one, is how can we now see this data and go, all right, let's accelerate it, so that every kid can see it, every teacher can see it, more importantly. So.
It's an age-old problem, though, Mr. Dion. It's an age-old problem. You have some teachers that go to PD and come back and engage in different instructional practices and some, it just, it's a developmental process for every professional.
Right.
We, we're, we're working with human beings, right? And we want, we want to take every kid where they are, but we also want every teacher, take every teacher where they are too. And forced compliance to coaching isn't going to change practice.
No, I understand that, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
So we didn't build that culture here in Milford. We're building it, own your own professional learning, guide your own professional learning. We've put these supports in place, but we're not going to like, you know, improvement by compliance. Rather, it's a, it's a process, and there are lots of ways to get to it. While we're focusing on coaching tonight, it's a slither, right? We also have the power of professional learning communities, PLCs, where grade levels, teachers across the school, across the system sometimes, work on a common goal. That's another opportunity for growing that coaches, I think, jump into occasionally. So I know we're talking about coaching, and this is like a huge investment, big lever for us, but it's one piece of a bigger picture also. I don't want us to forget that part, okay?
Fair enough. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Ms. Petrowski?
So I think this is touching a little bit upon what everyone else has been talking about, which is, for me, the coherence, right? So you have some people who are like, yay, yay, rah, rah, I want as much as I can get, and some who are kind of like, oh, a little more hesitant about it. So how do we get to a point where we are ensuring coherence across the system?
Well, it's the same question, I think, I was asked about HQI, right?
Right.
It's 251 classrooms at the elementary level, 491 actual physical spaces of learning in 14 schools. So that takes time, that takes the right conditions and culture, it takes not being reduced by 1.8 million dollars, like it's just, there are a lot of pieces to supporting, remember, we are human capital-driven. We are asking people to change their practice, develop and grow, because I, no teacher is like done. Nobody walks out of grad school and says, okay, I've learned everything I can at the age of 22, I'm ready to be an expert for the next 30 years. Right? Nope. Says no one. So I think that is the challenge. In improvement science, one of the biggest goals is shrinking variance of practice. And you even saw it in one of the reviews, I forget which one, but we potentially have practice vastly different in the same grade level in two classrooms next door to each other. That's our challenge as leaders, right? To shrink that variance. A big bet for us to shrink the variance in practice around curriculum, high-quality instruction, the use of assessment, and experience for kids, the big bet is coaching. So I think teachers have to trust coaches. Teachers have to be open to sharing their practice with coaches. Teachers have to trust their administrators that they can go to their coaches, and teachers have to see that this is just a growth process for everybody. It's, we're not targeting Emily needs more help than Adam, than Andy, like, it's just growth for all. And if we're going to be fair, we did it. We started last year officially. We, you know, last year was different of a year. Like, we're in this six months, and there are some people, though, Ms. Petrowski, if we're just going to speak honest, out of 251 teachers, we may have some teachers saying, no, thank you. Those are the ones that are, that's always going to be the case, regardless of what we talk about, right? Equitable practice, no, thank you. Access for all kids to AP. We already have some teachers that are 100% on board with that. High-quality instruction, I already do that, thanks. I don't need that. I don't need that. Now, for, lucky for us in MPS, that's not a large major, uh, not a large percentage. We have really high-level professional staff. So we have a very, very strong pool. So that is a good question that we're going to take on every day. How do you bring coherence across two hundred fifty-one?
Dr. Katia, may I add in one other point? So another point that didn't, uh, come out as a, um, theme that probably should have is the idea that coaches are the ones who are instrumental in setting up lab sites. So I know Dr. Katia has talked before about, um, the idea of building teacher leadership and how important that is. So even if a, a teacher doesn't necessarily want to enter in a coaching cycle, they're still working with the coach through that lab site experience, through professional learning. So I think we have to make sure, Dr. Katia said this before, you know, we're looking at slivers of coaching in this side-by-side moment, but really coaching is much more than that. So they are instrumental in the HQI, uh, implementation at all eight elementary schools, and that is helping to bring a strong level of coherence. So if a teacher doesn't want to engage in a coaching cycle yet, they may engage in a lab site. So they are going to get some peer-to-peer coaching, but the coach is instrumental in facilitating that lab site. They're the ones that are making sure that, that the instructional practice is there. They're the ones that are making sure that there's a pre-brief, a debrief. The themes are coming out in that debrief. So even though you may not necessarily have, you know, one of our instructional coaches side-by-side in that particular teacher's room, there is a different entry point and a different level of coaching that is happening with that teacher. So I think that's an important piece to remember as well. Those lab sites are also very important and happening in all eight of our elementary schools.
I would just add to another, uh, thing that everyone gets. So coaches unpack curriculum with every teacher. So when we have new curriculum, that's part of the routine, that, so grade levels, teacher. No one's not doing that. Everyone, everyone, so it may be that that's an entry point for the, for the curriculum piece. So there's, just to, to, uh, piggyback with Ms. Morris saying, there's a lot of ways that we're, um, giving teachers access to coaching support, um, based on kind of where they are in their growth process at the moment.
That's a huge entry point.
Yeah.
And, and when we think about it, um, if, if we had thirty percent of our elementary kids in two thousand thirteen intervention, this model is going to significantly reduce the number of kids that go to SAT as our bet. Right? So if the ultimate goal is to improve student learning, this is an accelerated way to get to kids, whether two hundred fifty-one are on board or not. It's still an accelerated way to get to more kids. Because a coach is working with a teacher, not just on that one or two children that might be struggling, but you've just increased the capacity of that teacher to get to all kids. And what we can't measure is how many kids did not fall behind because that teacher's capacity was increased.
Yeah, I, I, I see, I see so many, um, so many benefits to this. I mean, the, the fact that a remedial reading teacher, whoever that was thirty years ago, didn't really have the opportunity to interact with the classroom teacher about these kids. I mean, that's, uh, you know, I, I don't know how you could advance with that model. So I absolutely see the benefit of the coaches being more intimately involved with the teacher in, in the education process of each child, or as a group of children. I mean, it, it just makes total sense. Total sense.
But we, as you're hearing, have some teachers that just want their interventionist back.
Yeah, no, I, I, I get that, but I, I, literally, when you said that, I was like, "Oh, aha." Yeah, that just makes completely logical sense. If you're, if you have multiple teachers working with a single child, there has to be communication. There has to be some coordination. Otherwise, each benefit, you could be literally working directly against each other.
Meg worked with twenty to thirty kids a year with eighteen teachers. Likely, you're spread across, or maybe you were doing K-two or three, five or something, right? So maybe the, so.
But you could conceivably, both teachers could conceivably be working absolutely against each other with that child without that communication.
And I think what Meg, um, and I appreciate your honesty, Meg, because, uh, interventionists by nature, I think, over scaffold kids. Want to be honest, right?
That's, that was our job. Like, we, like, okay, this is the word cat, let's say to the cat, right? And then like, we were getting that, right? So like, total hand-holding. Uh, biggest at-home moment for me is like, "Oh, my gosh, I built the bridge over the, the learning net, right? The learning net, oh, my gosh, what was I doing?" But, you know, it, it, there is something to say, and we did try to collaborate with, um, classroom, with classroom teachers as interventionists, but it was oftentimes like just saying, "Hey, this is what we're working on, this is our next step." It really, while we probably tried to have conversations about how you can support them in the classroom, whether we didn't get to that point, or whether the classroom teachers just to not, not to their own fault, but didn't have the capacity to continue doing what we were doing, right? That wasn't their, their specialty, quote-unquote. Um, and again, not to their fault, but it was just something that we took care of, right? We took the kids, that was, that was, they were now our kids, right?
I imagine that.
They go down the hallway, they're your kids now.
Yeah. Yeah, but I would imagine that if you are, if you are an interventionist and you're trying to, um, coordinate with a teacher, there's different teaching styles. If you're not in that classroom and seeing the here and the now.
Even just like the, having the same language now, right?
Yeah.
Like, we might call some, I'm, I'm linking on an example of it. But what I might call something, they're using it differently. So now the kid thinks it's two separate things, when really, in reality, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
Um, I'm sure that happens more often.
Just to underscore the coherence thing, I think, I think the fact that the coach is side-by-side with the teacher, so when something happens with the kid, they can talk about it in that moment. It's not like, "Oh, we have a collab next Tuesday, and we'll talk about what happened." You'll remember, right? Like, and now it's seven days later, and the kid, "Now we'll do this," instead of doing it right then and there. And then I think the coherence work you brought up, too, where what was happening, what happened in the intervention model, is likely the kid is going again, yeah, some type of instruction that is completely separate from what the core grade level content is. And then maybe brought back to the classroom halfway through the reading or the math block. And, you know, the teachers say, "Well, I, they, they don't know what to do." And it's like, "Well, yeah, they, they just walked in halfway through the movie, and you're expecting them to know the plot? Like, it's not really fair." Um, so this way, they stay there the whole time. There is coherence in there, and it's like what they're getting, what they see. Um, and they're able to connect to the current learning, you know, any unfinished learning that's being addressed. So I think those are, they say, are able to address with this model that just can't, like, to your point, just can't be done well in the other intervention medium.
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. McDonough Souza?
Thanks. Um, just a quick question. So my understanding is that there are four coaches per elementary school, correct? So I don't know if there's a way to measure this, but has there been any feedback or anything as to whether that number of four per elementary school is like the perfect number? Are coaches like at capacity, like, we, if we had our druthers, we would rather have more coaches per elementary school? Or is it like, eh, some schools, the coaches like not, you know, they don't have as much to do? Do we have any feedback on four per elementary school that's a good number?
Um, I haven't heard stories of people sitting around. And honestly, Ms. McDonough Souza, in this environment, um, I, you know, I don't like to talk about, you know, post-COVID learning. I just, but we're seeing an impact, like, kid, our students of, let's say, our third graders of just a few years ago are not the third graders of today. There, there are some learning gaps there. So, um, this wouldn't be the time to unplug coaching in any way. Four feels like a rich model, right? Like, "Oh, wow, that's nice." But if we're talking about working with kids and teachers, now you're not only looking at working, like at Pumpkin with eighteen teachers, you're looking at working with eighteen teachers and three hundred kids. And that's for adults. So I would, I would challenge you to think, "Wow, four coaches for one school." Well, wait a minute, we're not just thinking about the adults. This is an adult and teacher, uh, adult and student approach. So four, and then you divide that into four hundred, right? So I would say that four is a sweet spot for us. And we did it so that we didn't come and ask for more FTEs. Like, we made the bet, we traded in the intervention for the coach. Um, I'd hate for like that move to now, we take the consequence of, "Oh, now we're going to get," it's, "All right, we'll take half of them away." Because four feels like it's a rich model, but, "Oh, wait a minute, now, now we only have two people to support kids and adults, right?" So, um, I think it's easy for people outside of this room who didn't hear this presentation tonight to say, "Whoa, you got four coaches? What? That's a lot of people sitting around doing nothing." Or not understanding that, yes, they do work all day.
Right.
And, uh, right, in the schools.
Can I tell you all my hat?
Yeah. In, in schools, and, and you guys, you engage in the right, the same level of district meetings as any other teacher. You're attending, attending P L, you're attending meetings to help write curriculum, right?
Writing curriculum.
But, but you're, you're, you're school-based people, that, that's your family. Live Focus is your family. You have the staff T-shirt to prove it and everything, right? So they are building base individuals.
So to be clear, there was no additional FTEs. It's just you shifted the model. So it's same FTEs, so budget neutral. Um, they can work with kids, they are working with kids. It's so untrue to say that they're not allowed to work with kids. That's not a truth, correct?
That is the first bullet point in their job description.
Working with kids. Um, and a child who was truly struggling with reading would have additional help through?
They're likely in the SAT process.
That was my next.
Um, SAT is a bunch of professionals around the same table, taking a, a much closer look at the child's struggles. Uh, there's a strategy. Uh, we are revamping our SAT process. So alongside of this is also another thing that's a change for teachers, right? So it's just all beautiful, great storm, right? So their, uh, kids are getting, um, help through that SAT process, but that's just looking different, right? So the end of SAT in tier two and three doesn't necessarily mean that Ms. Del Monte is going to now pick up that kid on her caseload and grab the kid at eleven o'clock, walk down the hallway and return it at eleven-thirty. So that's a model that teachers are used to. So if you're hearing there's no tier three, what you're really hearing is there's no tier three like it used to look like. There's, there's a different model, and coaches do work with kids, and it's on an individual kid-by-kid basis. Sometimes it's, "Yes, that kid needs extra time." But to Dr. Nobley's point, not during the grade level time, though. And that begs the question, so what is it okay for an elementary kid to miss? It's been an age-old question. Do you want to miss math to get extra reading? You're not allowed to pull out a P E. Don't take them out of recess. Of course, you don't want them to miss art, music, library. So there's, there's something missing. Um, so that's, that's a challenge when we're looking at additional supports for tier-three kids.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. It's getting.
Can I ask one last question? Is it, is it fair to say that the, I'm sorry, is it fair to say that the remediation model, the, the model for, um, spending the time with kids is now more just-in-time in a classroom versus taking them out of the classroom, moving them back?
I think we heard examples of just-in-time intervention.
I mean, that's really what, 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 what this shift is doing. Okay.
Thank you. We're going to send people home, is that okay?
We still have a little bit of our agenda left.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming, it was very informational.
We still have superintendent's report left.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Okay. High school graduation dates. So our last day of school, um, is June fourteenth, we hope. The two dates for graduation, uh, are held as of thirteenth and fourteenth. Slaw, slaw, yes. Law is slated to graduate the first night, followed by four and on the second.
Motion?
I'd like to make a motion that the Milford Board of Education establishes graduation dates of Tuesday, June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, and Wednesday, June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, for the senior classes of law and foreign high schools respectively. Graduation ceremonies should begin at five fifteen P M. for both high schools.
Your second?
My second.
Second by Mr. Fowler. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, board members. Moving on to Ms. Capazna's H R report.
Thank you. You have the report this month, which includes the job postings, personnel recommendations, retirements, resignations, terminations, and stipend deployments. I want to point out that, of course, the job posting list has a lot of postings for our summer programs. Um, so that's why the list is so long. And also want to mention, we are up to, uh, five retirements. And I do now personally have two more coming in. So I know we'll be at least at seven. Um, I think after April break, this is when people start to really consider. And, um, I think we'll be seeing a few more letters of retirement within the next month. Just a guess.
Questions from Ms. Capazna? On the H R report? I see none.
Thank you, and we'll move on to the quarterly budget report with Mr. Vichitelli.
Thank you, Dr. Katia. Um, this is glad to members of the board. As you know, uh, we come to you quarterly, um, in accordance with your, um, government's policy, um, to give you a report on where we are with budget. And, um, you know, I want to start out by saying that, um, I've been around a while. Um, this is probably the, the most difficult budget at this point, um, that, that I've seen since I've been here at Milford Public Schools. That's not to say that we haven't taken prudent measures to make sure that we end the year, um, with, uh, in, in the black. Because we will, um, Dr. Katia and I, um, when you had your orientation, we guaranteed you that, uh, we won't put you in jeopardy of having a budget that's, um, that's over budget and in deficit. So we're not going to do that. Um, but if you just go to the bottom line on page three, um, at this point, if you were to look at the, the, the report, um, we, we would be approximately one point two million dollars in deficit. Now, that's not, that, that's not, that's not going to happen at the end, and I'm, that's why I'm going to tell you why. We've taken steps throughout the year because we knew, there's nothing on this report, nothing that I'm going to tell you tonight, that I haven't already put on your radar screen before this. So I, I will highlight some of the areas that have we been having concern with throughout the year, um, and then, um, talk to you about, um, how we think we're going to make up for that bottom line deficit at this point. So, um, let's, let's just go right to, um, we'll, we'll, we'll start right out, and I'll talk about some of the areas that we've had concern. I always talk about first the, um, the teacher's salary line, one-one-one-one, because that's our biggest. Um, at this point, we are very close. Sometimes at this point in the school year, we see that, um, with a couple of hundred thousand dollars in surplus. Um, right now, we're, we're very close, um, which is where we should be. I should point out that, um, with this budget, um, and, and Dr. Katia's insistence on zero-based budgeting, we've gotten much, much leaner, uh, because we're looking at, from the very start, that zero base and really building from there. Um, and so the budgets in the past where there may have been some surpluses at this point at the end of the year, we're not seeing those now because of that emphasis on that zero-based budgeting and, and really getting down to exactly what the district needs, um, which is the right way to budget. And so, um, the account one-one-one-seven, teacher substitutes, as I've been telling you all along, um, that, that we do expect, um, a deficit of about one hun- one hundred and forty thousand dollars. That's for two reasons. One is because we raised the substitute rate to a hundred and forty dollars a day, um, to enable to, so we would be able to get substitutes. Um, and it was pretty successful in doing that. And the other reason is because, um, we haven't been able to, um, to get interns. And, and that's on account line number three-two-one-two. Um, there just hasn't been the interns. That's, that's part of the, the trend that we see with, you know, maybe post-COVID, maybe even further, that, um, we don't have as many teachers willing to be interns. And so instead of, um, having those interns who acted as building subs, we had to hire additional building subs. we had to hire additional building subs. And so that's that's adding to the line in account 1117, teacher substitutes. We have a couple of offsets, 1122 and 1125, custodians and paraprofessionals. We have a decent-sized surplus in those two accounts, and that's because of vacancies. We know we haven't been able to hire paraprofessionals. So there's been a number of vacancies. And the same thing with custodians. There's there's been a number of vacancies throughout the year that we are in the process of filling. Probably the biggest line that I want to bring your to your attention, and Mrs. Capazna just talked about it, and that's the retirement line, 1130. Right now, with only five, five retirement announcements, this is, that's way below our average. That's way below what we budget for. And so that's why you see a very decent surplus in that account. But if Mrs. Capazna's intuition is correct, we could be eating into that number a little bit because every retirement that we get, there's some severance that's paid out. So we need to watch that one closely, but that's where that number is right now. And we've actually, in addition to the five that have already announced the retirement, we've also built in a couple of more. So we still have a little cushion in that account. But once we get past, you know, the seven, eight, nine, then we're gonna we're gonna be digging into that line item. So account 3235, there's a deficit there, other pupil personnel services. As I've told you before, there were some areas that we weren't able to hire professionals. And so we had to go to agency placements instead of providing those services by a Milford Public Schools employee. And so that came out of that account, and that's why you see a deficit there. Legal services. At the at the end of the second quarter, I told you that, well, the the quarterly budget report showed that we were $67,000, and that deficit has continued to grow. It's currently at 85,000. And again, what I told you, it's because we had four negotiations this year. Our biggest one, of course, is is the teachers' union negotiations. In addition, the the number of expulsions that the district just had to deal with and other kinds of student-related issues that are taking place, probably tied to, you know, the the social, emotional, the the mental health issues coming out of COVID. But but that certainly is impacting legal services account. That's where that's where that amount, that's where that deficit can be attributed to. Contracted services, there's a healthy surplus there. And that's because we moved the athletic trainers, if you recall. We used to hire athletic trainers out of contracted services. Now we're paying them out of non-certified professional accounts. So we have a surplus there. And in addition, we didn't have much snow this year, so we didn't have to have outside contractors that we budgeted for snow. So a decent surplus there. We're doing fine in our utilities. As I told, last year was disastrous with utilities. Electricity and and natural gas was, we had huge deficits last year. But we are in a locked-in contract price right now, and and so we're doing fine in our utility accounts. In all of the the other facilities accounts, the 4300, I'm on page two now, I'm sorry. 4300 through 4308. Those, some of those accounts you see at zero. That means that we've encumbered the money for it. But that doesn't mean that we've spent all that money yet. We've reserved the money. But if we come down to the end and we see that we're going to be in a tight situation, we will hold on to those purchase orders and not release them until we know that we're going to be able to to make it at the end of the year. So so that that's one area where even though we we, it shows that we're, you know, there's 0% available balance, that those dollars are encumbered, but we we may not actually use those if we don't need to use them. So again, those prudent measures that we're taking to avoid any kind of problem at the end. Our biggest, the the biggest amount of money that we have in the budget is attributed to 5101, 02, 03. That's the special education transportation accounts. And also down 5600 and 5601. And those are the the transport, I'm I'm sorry, transportation and tuition accounts for special education. And we always run deficits in these. And then, as I tell you, that we don't get too concerned about it because they're pretty much offset by the excess cost grant. This year, the excess cost grant money that we anticipate the city will be getting back will not match the deficit that we have in those accounts. And Mr. Brown has talked about some of the, especially at budget time, talked about some of the new students that have moved into the district unexpectedly and and additional services that students are requiring. So there is more in those accounts than the excess cost grant will cover. But we've we've compensated for that in other areas. So another another big one, which is no surprise to you, is 5107, which is the fuel for the buses. I've been telling you all along, that's 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 an issue. So down to account 6,000, that's the freeze account. And this is one of those things that we did right after the new year. We put a 10% freeze on all instructional and non-instructional accounts, both for the schools in the per pupil expenditure and for the instructional division. So we just, we we've told everybody, need to prioritize. We need to take a look at what we most need, and we've reserved 10% of that for this rainy day to be able to cover the deficits that we have. And now on to page three. Another one is account 8,000. That's the freeze account for the student activities. I'm sorry, the freeze, you know, freeze account for other support, which includes professional development and other student activities. And the same thing, we put a 10% freeze on those those accounts so that we have a decent surplus there to offset some of the deficits that we have in other accounts. So I think I think that's, those are the highlights. Again, it's going to be a really close budget. But we will end on a balanced budget. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Do we know at this point what the excess cost grant will be?
It it fluctuates, but we're anticipating around 1.2, 1.3 million.
Questions for Mr. Richitelli. Mr. DeYoung?
Thank you. Mr. Richitelli, thank you for the detail on this. It does seem like it's quite quite the budget that you're dealing with. The excess cost grant, could you just talk about how that ended last year for us? Just so we can, just so you can remind us how that played out? And then, you know, you're we're anticipating that it won't cover all of our expenses this year.
Yeah, last last year, the we were not, we didn't have the deficit that we have this year. And so in actuality, we didn't need to cover as great a deficit in those accounts. So the city actually kept some of that money. We only, we're only entitled to what our deficit is. And so we have to send, Dr. Kataya has to send a memo to the mayor each year saying, this is the amount of our deficit. This is what you you're taking in from the state in excess cost. This is what we're asking the city to give us to cover that deficit. Last year, our deficit was not as great, so the the city actually benefited. I don't know the exact amount.
I do.
We can get the number.
I know.
It's like a million dollars.
It was a $1.2 million grant. We used 332,736, and we left 917,419 with the city.
So that was that was money that the city took in as revenue that was not account, that that was not on the on the revenue for the budget. That was excess revenue for the city.
Is that because we utilized our own responsible budgeting to cover some of those expenses so that we didn't end up with a surplus? In our general fund, I mean?
Not really.
Okay.
Because you're, you can only apply excess cost money to the deficit in special education costs.
Okay.
So it only applies to those areas. The the other things that we, you know, the other things in the budget would be other accounts that we wouldn't be able to apply to excess costs anyway.
It's really about the experiences of the students in front of you with special needs. Right?
Yeah, we, last year, we had some high-cost students move out of Milford
Oh, okay.
after the budget was designed. We also had developed some more robust in-house programs. So students we anticipated beating in out of district placement did. Some of it was locked, that people moved out, and some of it was good programming. That students stayed in the district instead of going to specialized schools.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Doyle?
I don't know if you know the answer to this question, or if it's feasible, or if something we want to do. Not, I'm not saying it is or it's. Legal services.
Yes.
Is that something we, you just touched on bringing more things in-house? Is Milford a district that could have a internal lawyer instead of having to go out of, for outside counsel for a lot of their services?
We could talk about that.
We could talk about that.
It piqued my interest, yes. But
Not obviously at this moment, in this conversation.
You're still gonna need some outside consulting because
Right.
Like for expulsion, you need a hearing officer impartial, right? So you can't have your own counsel running that.
But we could minimize some costs in certain aspects in terms of policy. I mean, we we utilize outside counsel to look at policies to look, that could come before the board, which is expensive, or any of those kind of routine matters could be potentially utilized internally.
They could be.
They could.
You know, I, the whole budget or the adjusted budget is about $265,000. So between hiring a full-time lawyer with expertise in, you know, in 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 school-related matters and also looking for those specialized services, I don't know, you know, I I don't know. But it's something that we certainly could take a look at.
I want us to do an analysis of
You have to add in benefits as well.
Right, right.
Right.
Of course.
Salary.
I I was just curious, because this seems to be
You have to add in benefits.
the last two years.
If you're hiring your own employee, you have to add in the benefits.
Correct.
Yeah, now I think we should do a multi-year analysis. Look at how it goes up during, you know, big bargaining unit. One strategy school districts have taken on is actually hiring someone with legal background into the H R department. And so if we get that opportunity, you know, not that we've really budgeted a big salary for that assistant.
Just curious, and that it's just
It's a good point.
to discuss maybe in the future, not tomorrow and not in the next six months. But so that's it. That's all the question I have.
Any other questions for Mr. Richitelli, Ms. Wapoy?
I'm just curious, that $900,000 in excess funds that was given to the city last year, is that typical of, no?
No.
There is money that goes back every year, though.
Not all years, not all years. But it, that information is actually in in the budget book each year. I I I print in the budget book how much we gave to the city, or it broke even. So there are years that money goes back to the city. There are years that the city gives us everything.
Would it be possible to know how much we've given back to the city as a gift for the past five, six years?
I I can I can give you those calculations.
That would be lovely. Thank you.
Any any other questions? So we're holding our breath. Everything has to land just right for June. Should we cross our fingers?
So part of this, Ms. Glenn, I think it's worth underscoring that where at one time we moved monies over at the end of the year to building and grounds. That's not happening.
Correct. And it hasn't happened in a few years.
Right. And so the veteran recommit budgeting, the less surplus there is, right? So that's the ethical and responsible thing to do. No fat being built into this budget, okay? But we, if you take a look at our building and grounds lines, they haven't been robust. And Pat isn't getting the benefit of end-of-year money, so we got to keep an eye on that. Our projects are not, we're not getting to our projects that we want to.
Something to think about for next budget?
Yes, ma'am. Okay, we are gonna move on. Sorry, there were, I didn't see.
Yep, last disbursement report?
Yep. Thank you. Board members, in your package is the usual list of all of the disbursements for the district over the amount of $1,500. And those highlighted in yellow are profit related, although I don't, yeah, we do. We still have some. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on the report.
I had a question on page 21 of the packet. Toward the top, Durham School Services, it's $3,162 for February for transportation.
Yes.
Boys and Girls Club. Are we still?
No, we we don't, yeah, that's a very good question. We don't, because the the Boys and Girls Club is piggybacking off of our contracted rates. Durham bills us, and then we bill Boys and Girls Club, and they reimburse us.
Alrighty. Very good.
That's a wash. Yeah, thank you for asking that.
Mr. DeYoung?
I just wanted to ask my monthly update on the the trailers. I see that we're still paying for them.
We are.
We're going to for a long time.
For a long time? Okay, then I'll stop asking for a few months.
Not until we get a storage place, right? So we we bought desks because we have to socially distance. I don't know where to put those.
Where are the trailers living right now? Are they on school grounds or?
No, they're they're at Eagle.
Eagle Hill.
I think in Orange.
Oh, where?
It's, I believe it's Eagle Leasing in Orange.
Oh, okay, alright.
Yeah.
So it's really, it literally is just storage.
It's off-site, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions?
That's all.
Consent, okay, consent report. All right, move on to consent agenda. Ms. Petrowski?
I'd like to make a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves the consideration of minutes for March 13th, 2023 business meeting, March 27th, 2023 committee of the whole meeting, March 29th, 2023 special meeting.
There's a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Fowler has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Board comment?
I have something I
Ms. Petrowski?
I I just want to kind of put it out there, you know, we just talked about budget stuff here. And obviously, there is a big white elephant in the room about, you know, the budget cut that we're facing potentially if if that's not filled. I do support fully funding the budget that we proposed. I know that the administration was very thoughtful, spent a lot of time and effort on proposing what the schools need, not what we'd like to see or big pie in the sky stuff. It's what we need. And I've been struggling with what our options are, quite honestly. I'm assuming everybody else has as well. It's a little scary for me that if we don't get any, if we don't get any funding back, when I look at these numbers, I, quite frankly, and I'll share it with everybody here, quite frankly, I I think our only option is going to be to close the school, which is absolutely horrendous to have to say. But I just wanted to share that with everybody else on the board, that that's my thinking at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Petrowski. Ms. Doyle?
I want to say thank you to the administration, all the teachers who've come to this evening, all the parents that have come out, out to our edebre meeting, the Board of Alderman meeting, to all the work they've done into here. I thought this meeting pulled everything in for me in terms of what it means in terms of the budget and why every single dollar needs to be put into that budget. Before I am here today, I was a personal trainer for a decade. And I remember the first day I was a personal trainer, and I sucked. I sucked as a trainer. And I hurt my clients, and I hurt, and I say that not in a way, but I didn't know what I was doing, even though I was certified, even though I had done all the things that got me to what I needed. I needed instructional coaches to make me better at my I needed instructional coaches to make me better at my job a decade later so that I could teach other trainers, can I do those things, to be able to move forward and have a successful business. And at the end of the day, the business here is the business of students and teaching students. And we have to focus on our human capital. So we have to invest in every single teacher, every administrator, every paraprofessional, every staff, every custodian, every athletic trainer that we have serving within our district. So we need the money to support human capital and the talent. We need the money to support facilities. We've discussed multiple times in each one of these budgets how we are zero-funding and that we are going to take a surplus and put in our maintenance. We've already zero-budgetged that. There is no excess. We've discussed that here. We need that money. We can't pull from there in those spaces because we are just deferring costs. There isn't a time to cut it back. I agree with Ms. Petrowski. The only option is to close a school, which is not a great option if we are to come with that horrific cut of one point eight million dollars. And this whole process demonstrates that we are moving forward. One thing I've noticed in my time on the board, which isn't very long, is that there's a lot of things that haven't happened over the last twenty years, that there's a lot of time to gap fill or trying to catch up or change systems. And this presentation tonight to look at and say, "In 2013, we have an agency come in and say, 'These are X, Y, and Z problems.' And a decade later, we are finally starting to see the progress of those changes is extraordinarily important, and especially with COVID thrown in the middle and everything being shut down." So to me, we need to have every single dollar in this budget. And I want, next year, more money. Because at the end of the day, one to two percent cut seems insignificant. If it was so not significant, we wouldn't be talking about closing a school. We would not be talking about it. We would talk about cutting back on maintenance. We'd be talking about, I don't know, I don't even know, because there's nothing really to cut here. I mean, we can talk about special education services, but as Mr. Brown said, we got lucky that we saved almost a million dollars in costs last year. We don't know what's going to happen. And we have to plan for the future and budget responsibly, but make sure we fund accordingly.
Thank you. Other board comment? Ms. McDonough Sousa?
Thank you. I thought Ms. Doyle said it perfectly, so I will incorporate her comment into mine, except for the part about being a personal trainer. Definitely never have been. But I just want to echo that. I appreciate hearing from all the parents and community members. You know, I've received several emails, hearing from individuals during public comment has been very eye-opening. And I really, you know, appreciate hearing everyone's thoughts on this really important issue. And like everyone said, it's a very hard decision, one that I've been thinking about a lot. And, you know, I just think that, to the extent that some people, I've been hearing that this is fear-mongering, that we're going to be closing the school, that this is not fear-mongering. This is the reality of what happens when one point eight billion dollars has been cut from the proposed budget. And we need to be realistic in finding the best solution without moving backwards in our progress in terms of programming. So I, too, at this point am... And by the way, I went to Harborside myself. I was hoping that my future kids would be able to go to Harborside. And I know we're not specifically talking about necessarily that school now, but I'm just saying that, right now, my position is that to close a school would be the best option here. And it pains me to say it, but that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. DeYoung?
Thank you. I'll echo what everybody said, but I think it's really important that the elected officials in our city listen to our city, listen to our community. For five and a half hours over two nights, our community came out and they said they do not want this cut. They've said it in election after election. They do not want us to cut education funding. They believe in what the Board of Education is doing. They have come to our meetings and said it. They have gone to the Board of Finance meetings and said it. They have gone to the Board of Alderman meetings and said it. There is no ambiguity as to where our community stands on this cut. They do not want it to happen. None of us want it to happen. We're all wearing... I'm not wearing stickers. It's on my computer. It is ridiculous that we are sitting here talking about closing a school. But that is our reality. And I have to say that I was blown away by all of the stories and the research that parents did when they spoke in front of the Board of Alderman. People brought study upon study upon study. Sometimes it felt like we were listening to Dr. Kataya talk. It was a... Frankly, it was a great billboard for our school district, quite honestly. Five and a half hours of people saying over and over and over again, "What a great district we have." It's all in the Board of Alderman's hands. I hope that we do not have to come back here and make that decision to close a school. But if we do, I believe that's our only option as well.
Thank you, Mr. DeYoung. Ms. McBoyton?
It was funny, though not funny. When we were talking about storage issues a few minutes ago, my first thought was, "Oh, if we close a school, where are we going to put all the stuff? Where are all the chairs and desks going to go?" And it was a really absurd thought. And it just ties into this whole situation, which is extremely absurd. I think that my colleagues have all made such important points tonight that I feel absolutely as well. You know, one of the things that is most disturbing to me is hearing comments from subsidy officials saying, "Oh, they can withstand a less than two percent cut." And also that idea that Ms. McDonough Sousa mentioned about that we're fear-mongering, that, you know, that none of this is really a reality. You know, it is reality. And I struggle every day with thinking about, "How do we communicate this effectively to City Hall? How do we make them really understand what is happening?" Unfortunately, you know, one of the things that I've been hearing is that despite the five and a half hours of testimony, that except for one or two alders, that it hasn't really swayed them in either direction, that they are still very neutral. So I know that Dr. Kataya and Ms. Glennon, I know that your presentations are coming up before the Board of Alderman. I know that you are going to do a fantastic job and you are going to bust all the myths and show all the facts. But if there is anything that we as a board can do to support you, if there are any ideas that you have, I'm sure that I speak on behalf of the majority of us that we really want to be your partners in helping make this happen. You know, I am planning on talking one-on-one with the three alders from my district with the hope that perhaps face-to-face, that they might actually hear me and really understand what's going on. It's that lack of understanding that really is so disturbing. I don't know why it exists when there is so much information that is out there in the public.
Thank you. Any other... Anyone else want to make comment? Ms. Erbe?
I think... I just want to respond. The distance that people are away from students, I think, just creates sort of a lack of understanding. Even for spring break, we're one day back from spring break. And I was away. I was having a great time. And then I come back and I'm talking to my students, and not everyone had a great time. So my students, some of my students are, you know, at home, did nothing, which is fine for sometimes, you know. Doing nothing is fine. And then others wanted to do things and couldn't do whatever. So not knowing... And I didn't know that last week. Last week, I'm living my own life, doing whatever. Coming back and talking to the students. And I wanted to thank the families that came out, come back and hearing those, the public comments and the stories from the Board of Alderman meeting. Listening to the children speak at the meeting meant so much to me. They had so much to say, and they said it so well. I think it's so important that everyone tries to remember, to understand that every role is important in the lives of children. So even from teachers, I mean, you said it a number of times in various ways, the teachers, the administration, custodial staff, whoever is in their lives is important. And administration has made, you know, have made decisions on what those positions are. And they're important. And for people who are so far removed to try to control that, doesn't make sense. It should be more... It should be trusted that the administration of the public school should know better and should have a better understanding of what the children need, being closer to their needs.
Thank you. Ms. Allen?
I just want to say I really appreciate hearing from teachers and coaches tonight. I think that having these evidence-based programs, like moving to a coaching model over an interdimensionist one, is one of the things that really sets our district apart. And so having these instructional coaches and STEM labs and world language earlier and earlier, these things, I can't imagine cutting any of them. And so I have to agree with others tonight when they said that the only way to really make up this lack of budget would be to close a school, which is so hard to even talk about. So all I can say is I really hope that that money is restored.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Fowler, anything to add?
Am I the only man out there? No, I mean, am I the only one I hasn't spoken? Yeah, no, I agree with the rest of my colleagues here that, I mean, trying to close a school is... It seems to be the only way forward to get to that one point eight million dollar reduction. And that's where my head is at right now. And that's the reality.
Thank you. I have nothing further to add. I mean, I agree with what everybody has said, and it's just really disheartening that we have to have these conversations. So my fingers are crossed, my toes are crossed. And we'll see where things go. We'll have further discussion as we need to. With that said, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at ten twenty-two. Motion to adjourn.
One second.
Is there any opposed? Here are no adjournments. It's time to close. Thank you.